The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The air is fresh and clear. The scent of fresh grass is freshening up. The wind is blowing the leaves to the right. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow. The leaves are turning green. The leaves are turning red. The leaves are turning white. The leaves are turning yellow.
Councilmember Bridegum.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Tuha Wen.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Klaufenstein.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. We will start with Housing Authority. Is that you stuff or who is that?
That's mine.
Oh, yeah.
So, is there any, oh, please roll call.
Commissioner Beckles is absent. Commissioner Bridegum.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Klaufenstein. Commissioner Tuha Wen.
Yeah.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Solario.
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen.
Here.
And Chair Bowie.
Yeah. I would like to open auto communication. Anyone who would like to speak to the Housing Authority. This is non my close auto communication and we move to consent item that to action on the agenda tonight.
Second.
Please call for the vote.
Motion received, eight yes votes.
Matter from the Commissioned, I see the item three A here. Is that staff report?
Yes, there is. Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight's report is regarding rental assistance and other support available to veterans through the Section Eight Housing Program and other HUD programs. At the Commission's direction, staff has reached out to congressional representatives and other housing authorities to communicate the needs for resources for veterans and to see what other resources, if any, may be available. In July two thousand and ten, Garden Grove Housing Authority accepted application for the Section Eight Housing Assistance Program. We receive over seventeen thousand applications. An application were placed on the waiting list in the order of date and time of submission. Garden Grove residents that were veterans, widows of veterans, or victims of domestic violence were prioritized to be on top of the list. After the waiting list was established, the Housing Authority spent nearly three years contacting applicants in these two prioritized categories, which included approximately four hundred veterans. They were interviewed and qualified applicants were provided rental assistance. The remaining applicants on the waiting list are very low-income families, seniors, individuals with disabilities, and other qualifying individuals. Currently, there are approximately fourteen thousand applicants on our waiting list. The Housing Authority may have the ability to provide additional assistance to veterans who are not currently on the waiting list. However, this would further delay assistance to the current applicants. Most housing authorities in Orange County operate similar to Garden Grove. However, there are several housing authorities that offer supplemental programs for veterans. For example, some housing authorities offer assistance to homeless veterans through the Veteran Affairs Supportive Housing Program, or VASH. It combines housing vouchers for homeless veterans with case management and clinical services provided by the Department of Veteran Affairs. Although Garden Grove does not have the VASH program, we are able to refer homeless veterans to the Long Beach Veteran Administration who will work in placing qualifying veterans in one of the following programs, of the existing programs. Garden Grove Housing Authority can look into potential opportunities to seek funding for similar programs in the future. Over the past several years, Housing Authority staff has met with and written letters to congressional representatives and advocating for additional resources for Section Eight program that adequately meet the community's needs. We are pleased to report that past advocacy effort may have resulted in an approximately two million dollar budget increase in the current fiscal year, which will help the program address increases in rental costs and provide assistance to approximately hundred fifty families who are currently on the waiting list. Furthermore, we have recently sent additional letters, emails, made phone calls to HUD, and our congressional representatives expressing the need for resources to assist our veterans. We will continue to follow up to advocate for funding for this purpose. That concludes my report and I'm available for questions.
Ms. Chair. I do have a quick, what's the current protocol or prioritizing model for the housing?
The current waiting list right now is basically based on date and time of.
So it's first come, first served?
Yes.
So there's not like, we put women fleeing domestic abuse above this group or we don't put the veterans above this group or anything like, it's just strictly first come, first.
No, we actually do. We have veterans or widow of veterans or victims of the domestic violence as priority categories. We put them on top of the waiting list. And when we opened in two thousand and ten, we received approximately four to five hundred applicants with those under the categories. So in the past, the first three years of that, we contacted those applicants and have assisted them. So right now, we no longer have that category raised in our waiting list. Now, if we happen to have a person that is currently or recently a domestic violence victim, certainly we can move her away on top of the list.
So right now, you're saying previously when they first implemented, two thousand and ten, I believe you said, the veteran status was part of the prioritizing, but currently we don't have any prioritizing?
They are prioritized, but we have worked with them already, so they are no longer on the list. Right now, as far as, right now, it's on our list, we no longer have Garden Grove residents who are veterans.
Okay, so there's no veterans currently on the waiting list, that's what you're saying?
Non-Garden Grove only, but not Garden Grove residents, you're right.
I think the issue is during twenty ten, when we have like close to twenty thousand people applying for Section Eight assistance, we then closed the application. We do not accept any new applications since two thousand and ten. So if there is a veterans, if someone get out of the Army, let's say in two thousand and twelve, and they need assistance, even though Section Eight favor, you know, give priority to the veterans, they cannot, they cannot be processed by us because they, we closed the application period already. So there's nothing we can do to help that veteran, even that veteran is someone who deserve to be helped. So, and I asked Danny that why can't we open the enrollment period only for veterans? The question is, we could do that. This Housing Authority Commission can vote to allow a brief period to allow veteran only to apply. But that, the downside of that is we would then put the other fourteen thousand people waiting a little bit longer. So that's the nutshell of it.
What is the average time that someone is in, receives help, Section Eight? Is there an average time period, five years, eight years, you know, before they are able to leave that and it's available for someone else?
At this time, there is no time limit, so.
Do we know, has there been a study like in Garden Grove how, what the average is or can't even take a guess at that?
My guess will be seven to eight years.
Okay.
I'm, I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to opening it up to veterans, but then there's other groups that you would want to open it to. Like I said, women fleeing domestic violence, those type of situations. So I don't know if it'd be fair to do that as much as I'd like to.
So is there any other question regarding this report? Since now, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to file this report?
Motion file, file the report.
I'll second it.
Please call the vote.
Motion received, eight yes votes to receive and file the report.
Matters, other matter from the Commissioners. Since now, I have an item that I would like to share with you. Last Monday, two days, just yesterday, I was at the Fairheaven Memorial Park to, you know, pay tribute to the holding Americans. And during that meeting, during that services, our DA, Todd Spicer, delivered a very touching speech in which he outlined his program to create a special DA task force to deal with the veterans who return home after fighting in the wars. And due to various issue with PTSD and very various experience with the war environment, they are prone to problem with drugs and other felonies. But if, but Scott mentioned that these are the men and women who risk their own life fighting for our country. They returning home, it's really sad that they get into problem. But we need to take care of them. They give up their whole, their whole life for us. It touched me a great deal. And most veterans there applaud with the speaker because they felt that if the veteran haven't done enough for them, if the state doesn't do enough for them, if the VA doesn't do enough for them, we Americans should also, you know, have this resolution to help our veteran who risk their life to fight for us. And so I would like to ask my colleague to consider what we can do for the veterans. Many of them, when this housing open enrollment was open to resident of Garden Grove, they was not here to apply for it. The reason that they did not apply for it was because they are not here, because they was busy fighting in a foreign soil. And so now they return home and they, they need help. I think they deserve to be given a chance to apply. And if they are qualified, then they should be, should be helped. Obviously, other group need help too. The low income, you know, the women of abuse. But no one deserve it more than our veterans. And the only reason they couldn't apply was because they was in the service at the time. And so I would like to ask my colleague to agenda this at the next Housing Authority meeting to vote to open a brief, another brief enrollment period to allow the veterans only to apply for it.
Question on veterans applying, do they need like an honorable withdrawal, like a DD two fourteen?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Thank you.
I need to better understand when we open enrollment, can we do that? What does that entail? Do we have places for them if they, we open it for, like what is the purpose of opening enrollment? Not, I would love to find housing for our veterans, but that's not my, that's not the issue I have. I'm just saying, we open enrollment for what, to put them on a waiting list? To give them housing, what does that mean and what result, what is the impact of that?
Well, I'm really not sure what Commissioners Bowie has in mind, but if we would open and accept them on the waiting list, we would have to, there's a process, we have to update our admin plan to accept them. We have to classify that because we have never done that before, so we have to name it as an emergency special admission. We have to update our admin plan. The Commission will have to approve the new updated admin plan and we have to, there's a process to do it. But once we accept them into our list, they will go on top of the waiting list, which of course means that the current applicants will have to be behind in line.
Right, Tuha, please.
Just another question, back on with the Councilwoman Kim Nguyen. For the open enrollment, especially the waiting list, currently, how many people in the waiting list that we have?
Currently, we have approximately fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand, so the open enrollment to add on to the waiting list and that, how long that gonna be? And especially how the funding to actually accommodate fourteen thousand plus any extra?
We, because of lack of funding, our current people on the waiting list right now have been waiting for nine years. And at the rate we're going to go through that, the list that we have now would take another fifteen, twenty years to complete the list. So the people on our current waiting list right now have been waiting a long, long time because of lack of funding.
So if, so that's a very difficult dilemma that we, that we face. If we open the enrollment for veterans, we could have two hundred, we could have four hundred, because in twenty ten, we opened the enrollment, right? And there was about four hundred veterans apply for it?
Approximately, yes.
So we open, and that's nine years ago, right? So now if we open the enrollment, there could be another, you know, four hundred. The fourteen thousand that remain, they have been on the list for nine years. And we add, we reduce about how many, a hundred a years?
We help, we help approximately a hundred and twenty or so a year, yes.
New one?
New ones, new ones.
So for the last nine years, every year, we are able to help, you know, reduce about a hundred and twenty applicants. You know, if that's the case, then it takes another fourteen years, unfortunately. So how do we do that? It's not because we have more money, but because people are dropping out. They move to a different state, they move out of Garden Grove. So we then have that voucher to help the one on the waiting list. But if we do not open the enrollment for the veterans, then what we're saying is those veterans that return home, they will not be able to help, we will not be able to help them.
I do have another question. So let's say we were to open to the veterans. How, how do we know that they're Garden Grove veterans versus, you know, hey, there's a, Garden Grove's opening up and we get all these people from other cities coming here to try to apply? Is there a methodology in place or something that, that we can say, you know, you have to have been living in Garden Grove for such a period or?
Yes, they have to have some type of legal documents to show that they are Garden Grove residents, a driver's license, a bank account, something from social services, something like that. They have to prove that they are Garden Grove residents. If they are not residents, they can apply, we cannot stop them from applying, but they will go in back of the line behind our residents.
Can, so before we open enrollment, I just, I would prefer to have this come back with more details, right? Because by opening enrollment, we're gonna cause ripple effect on other areas as far as like our plan that we currently have for the Housing Authority. I'm interested to see that the veterans who are, who missed the opportunity to apply when the last open enrollment was, which is two thousand and ten, that they lived in Garden Grove in two thousand and ten. Does that make sense? Because why open enrollment in two thousand and nineteen for individuals who just moved to Garden Grove in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen? We're talking about, they were not here in two thousand and ten, were unable to enroll when we opened enrollment. So I'd be open to that, but I need more information before we disrupt the whole process. And I would also like to encourage staff that, I know you've written some letters and met with congressional members, but that we continue to do that. When we get more information, we have a number, we have X number of veterans that were unable to apply in two thousand and ten. We really need you to push this at the federal level, get us more funding, give us more opportunities. They missed out because they were serving and protecting us, and so now we need to do something a little extreme to get them housed or to help them be housed. But I want to do so being cognizant of the individuals who are already on that waiting list and also making sure that we're not adding individuals who were not here in Garden Grove in two thousand and ten.
As far as.
Because that would be unfair.
Yeah, as far as federal regulations, I believe we cannot do that. In fact, residency, a person literally move into Garden Grove a week, a day, it would be considered Garden Grove residence and therefore.
Also, if the veteran come and apply, right? And then, and on your report, you said there's all, there's all the resources that you referred to, to Long Beach, right? Do you have any actual number that how many veteran actually reach out to you, applying for the, and then you refer to those resources and then they got qualified for assistance? Do you actually have that numbers?
We, I don't have the exact numbers, but speaking to other housing authorities, a housing authority that has dealt with. housing authority that has dealt with with the VA, the process isn't as smooth as we would like it to be, they would tell me. So there's some complications in in getting referrals from 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 Long Beach to cities, and that particular program is actually for homeless veterans and not just veterans.
I'm I'm supportive in the intent of Councilmember Bowie's point, but Councilmember Bowie, can you amend that so that we can have more information at the next meeting?
Sure. Right. I don't think this is something that we have to to vote at the next meeting. If if, you know, my colleague need more time, then what I would like to do is I would like to ask Mr. Do authorize Mr. Danny Huen to study and present more factual to the council so that we can we can discuss it at the next Housing Authority and then potentially take action the following, you know, the following of the next Housing Authority meeting.
If you motion it?
I'm okay with that.
If you motion it, I'll second it.
Okay. I make that motion to direct Danny Huen to do a detailed study.
And I'll second that motion.
But it doesn't necessarily have to be the next meeting, it's however long it takes them to do the study, correct?
Yeah, this is not an urgent urgent issue that have to be resolved right away.
One other item, just outside of housing, another thing that we can do to help veterans is always to provide veteran hire first, you know, let's say city hiring or anybody we deal with with contracts and agreements require a 30% veteran hire, local hire. That's another way to give them most most veterans that are able-bodied still want a job, they just want to work. They don't want a handout, so.
Are we voting?
Yeah.
All right.
Any other matters?
Motion received, eight yes votes.
Any other matters? So I now close the Housing Authority meeting to turn it to the next Housing Authority meeting on Tuesday, June 25th at 5:30.
Sorry to mess it up.
by Maurice Stipe and then pledge allegiance by Tuho.
If everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear gracious Lord, we humbly ask that you would bless everyone assembled here this evening and the work that we seek to do. Help us to work in harmony as we strive to make the best decisions for our community. Purify our intentions, strengthen our purpose, and grant that in serving our community, we may also serve you, Lord.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go on to presentations. We do have one community spotlight in recognition of Gregory Kozlowski for being named 2018 Special Olympics Athlete of the Year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Come on forward.
Come on up. And we'll start with a quick staff report, talking about your accomplishments.
I'll read a little bit, and then you'll have an opportunity, Greg, to talk right after. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is proud to recognize Gregory Kozlowski for being named 2019 Special Olympics Athlete of the Year. Founded in 1968, the mission of Special Olympics is to provide year-round sports training and athletic competition for children and adults with disabilities, giving them opportunities to develop physical fitness, demonstrate courage, experience joy, and participate in sharing skills and friendship with their families and other Special Olympics athletes and the community. This year, the Special Olympics World Games were held in the Middle East for the first time in Dubai, United Arab Emirates. There were 200 nations represented by 7,500 athletes who competed in 24 sports. It was the largest humanitarian and sports event of the year. Gregory is a native of Garden Grove and Pacifica High School graduate. He's been involved with Special Olympics for over 17 years and is is an ambassador representing all aspects of Special Olympics, sports training and competition, healthy athletes, leadership development, and advocacy for inclusion. Gregory started playing golf with his father when he was young and continues to be an avid golfer today. He was on the wrestling team in high school, and more recently, he added bowling to his sports training. 2015, Gregory was one of the three athletes from Orange County selected to participate in the Special Olympics World Games held in Los Angeles. He was also selected as a member of the United States delegation in a unifying sporting event hosted by the Guinness Book of World Records in Shanghai, China. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Gregory Kozlowski with a certificate in recognition of his achievements. The city congratulates and wishes you, Greg, much success in all of your future endeavors.
Come on up here, and let's all take a picture with all.
Thanks for the introduction. Just lucky, it's not just the name of my bowling team in Special Olympics, it is how I feel about this award. It's awesome, and I'm honored to accept it. To begin, I wanted to share our athlete honor because it's helpful in everything we do in life. Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt. Thank you. Thank you, City of Garden Grove, for this honor. And that shows you believe in me and in Special Olympics. I believe this organization helps the community to better understand the inclusion, the importance of teamwork, and helping others. I am especially grateful for all of the Garden Grove law enforcement, as they are also big supporters of Special Olympics. This year, you can see them in action when they run our flame of hope through the streets in Garden Grove, leading up to the Southern California Special Olympics Summer Games, June 8th and 9th. And when many of them help raise funds, when we go over the edge in August, rappel down a 16-story at the Garden Grove Hyatt Regency on August 9th and 10th. And I'm challenging all of you to try it this year.
I'll do it.
I would like to recognize my family and friends who have always been there and encouraging me. And I'm proud to be representing the City of Garden Grove, and as I think, our city is amazing. In closing, I now ask all of you to please repeat after me a phrase that is close to my heart. Special Olympics
Special Olympics.
Is life-changing
Is life-changing.
And life-growing.
And life-growing.
Thank you.
That was beautiful, and congratulations. Okay, that now takes us on to oral communications. I do have, I've got a ton of cards tonight. I'm gonna separate this out. So for all the cards that I have that are specifically referencing item 5D, we're gonna take those when we get to 5D. So I only have several cards, or I've got, I guess, a handful of cards that are generic to public comment. So if you're if you're here to speak on 5D, we'll get to that when we get to that item, where we can have a focused discussion about it when we get to that. So oral communications, Tony Flores.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, I'm Tony Flores. On March, excuse me, May 3rd, Pacifica Alumni had a golf tournament in honor of our coach, Bill Craven, who's actually still kicking, a good man. This is our second year we've had it. We actually had it this year over at the Willowick Golf Course. With a little help from city staff and Mr. Rick Lerman, we were able to get the venue. We normally have it over at Skylinks, but things all a bit wacky over there, and the weddings and whatnot took a little bit precedence, and the cost was a little bit big. Any case, the folks that were actually behind it was a group called The Crunch Bunch. It's a group from 1978 season. We were the first folks to go to the CF playoffs, had number one defense in the county. And even before we got to high school, a lot of us were friends, we became a little bit closer, and we remain so. Unfortunately, one of those folks was, we lost, a guy named Mark Campbell. I think you folks may have heard the name. Actually, Mark was the best man in my my wedding, and I was in his, and our families grew close ever since we met in sixth grade. One of the other folks that I I met around that time too is a guy named Scott Harrison, he's here tonight as well. Again, we we kind of grew into more of brothers than anything, and having said that, we were able to bring in a few dollars. We actually brought enough in after we paid the course and all the other costs of chow and everything, we've we were able to donate $600 to the Garden Grove PD Fallen Five Memorial Fund. During our raffle, Mark Campbell's brother Craig, who's a retired fireman, actually won the the 50/50, 530 bucks. He donated that back to us, we give to the softball program of Pacifica, which we're doing. And tonight, we actually have a T-shirt with the Bill Craven's Mariner Classic, American flag on one sleeve, and in memory and honor of Mark Stephen Campbell, we have his initials here. And I'd like to give the Garden Grove Community Foundation, this is again through the Pacifica Alumni, all the folks, and it's not just football players, these were, we had some cheerleaders, we had other students, band folks, I mean, it was a number of folks that were there, not just sports. A lot of folks showed up. Anyways, we now have a check here for $4,416.88 to give to the Garden Grove Community Foundation. I was reminded to also mention the the players who played and the folks that took first place, Mr. Rick Lerman's team took first place. Any case, and again, it was a great turnout, a little bittersweet though. Again, losing Mark in that particular group, I think you folks have mentioned him earlier in one of the other council meetings, but we go back a long way. I mean, so so much so, I speak with his his brother and his sisters with some some frequency, and they're having a rough time of, you know, we we lost Mark kind of kind of suddenly. But, you know, he was he was a heck of a man, heck of a person, and his his coaching legacy is gonna live on to quite a long time. Put hundreds of girls into four-year schools to secure their education. We're gonna miss him sorely. I know I miss him every day. Him and I used to talk frequently in the mornings, just a heck of a man, but I think next year, we'll see what happens with that. But again, we wanted to thank city staff too for helping us out with that, and appreciate your time. Thanks again, Rick. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Patrick Kreitner and then Janet Kreitner.
Mayor Jones, Mayor the Mayor Jones, members of the city council. My name is Nicholas Dibbs. I'm like Tony Flores and some of the others in this room, I graduated from Pacifica High School, graduated with honors, and then became a teacher in 1992, credentialed science teacher. And it's been a pleasure, as I've mentioned in past council meetings, to be for the third year sponsoring the Garden Grove College Graduates Reception, which we had at the last, just prior to the last council meeting on May 14th. I've worked in a number of school districts for several years during that time, including Long Beach Unified, Garden Grove Unified, Norwalk-Lamarada Unified. And I also was an educational consultant for Southern California Edison on their Science Connection Program. And I also worked for the State Water Project as water education and tour coordinator for several years on the west branch of the State Water Project and the California Aqueduct. I'm I'm here because of a number of things. Our school district, I did run for school board, and I advocated increasing career and technical education and bringing back our wood shops that were cut from the ten and immediate schools and restoring the auto shops to our high schools. We have four high schools that have no auto shop. But in all that I've done as a volunteer and trying to help the city, the school district, and the community, I'm I want to continue to help make our community better and help the students so that as a way to give back. And I'm concerned about a couple of things. When the students leave, when they're not at school, they're they fall under the purview of the city in the sense of what's going on. So both the city and the school district need to work together. As you know, I was an advocate for Bringing Back Youth and Government Day, which Councilman Bretigan and myself participated in as high school students, being part of Youth and Government Day, and it went on for a few years, and then it was canceled for a few, a number of years, and then I advocated it, bringing it back, and it came back in 2018. Unfortunately, this year, it's not coming back. So I want to point out in the USA Today article on the front page, "Help Eludes Suicidal Teens." Suicide rate among teenagers is going up. This was made it to the front page of USA Today on May 20th. There's a need to to have more mentoring programs, have programs for youth, and to have youth commissions and youth and government, not only Youth and Government Day, but youth commissions, which the City of Long Beach, City of Anaheim, City of Huntington Beach, and many other cities have a commission. And I want to bring to your attention that on October 21st, 2013, the City of Long the Long Beach City Council adopted a resolution forming the city's first commission on youth and children, consisting of 10 adults and nine youth. This goes beyond the the Parks and Recreation focus of our city when it comes to youth. It gets to mentoring programs for youth, helping guide them through a number of different challenges, including the Safe Routes to School Program, increasing mentoring programs, reducing suicide, doing a number of things that our city could be doing. But what it all comes down to, if I could boil it down and coalesce it, is establishing my recommendation to you, because there's so much out there and there's a lot to be done, we need another commission. And I would like to ask the mayor, since he was had seven years ago had the foresight to establish the college graduates reception program, to now, along with the council members, do what Long Beach did, Long Beach City Council did in 2003, and please did in 2003, and please give serious consideration to forming the City of Garden Grove's first-ever commission on youth and children, so that we have a group of dedicated adults and community leaders and student leaders to put together a number of things that will help make this city better for the youth of Garden Grove. And again, it goes beyond just parks and recreation. So thank you very much for listening. Thank you, Mayor Jones.
Thank you, Nick.
And the council.
All righty, now Patrick and then Janet Kreitner.
He's still picking up our daughter. Oh, then there they are. Never mind. Perfect timing.
You're up. Good evening.
My name is Patrick Kreitner. That I'm here for. Falcon Lane over in the Garden Grove here. And subsequently, have just recently received a $5,802 supplemental property tax. That's basically increasing the mortgage payment that I own by an additional $500 a month. And when I called and spoke to them about it, and they just gave me a general idea that it's just a supplemental property tax. I don't know who in Garden Grove all pays that property tax, but if the average person is paying an additional $500 a month on their mortgage payment, it just really puts a bind on someone like me that's retired and on a fixed income. And upon talking to my mortgage company, when they described it to me, they indicated that this could go on for three, four, five, six years, that this could continue on with basically no explanation of other than, we've decided to increase your property tax by almost $6,000. And I'm wondering how someone, especially in my case, like someone retired, how do they expect me to be able to afford an additional $500 a month to pay for a supplemental property tax that I really don't have any idea what it means, what it stands for? So I guess that's what I'm here for, is an explanation as to, is this standard? Everybody in Garden Grove got an additional $6,000 added on to their property tax?
Yes. By the way, it's a one-way, oral communication is just for you to address the council on issues, but I believe what you're asking is not within our jurisdiction. I was going to ask, can staff please refer you to the county tax assessor's office to discuss your matter with the appropriate governing body that oversees property tax assessments and supplemental assessments? Because it's not the city. We don't do that. It's, you need to talk to the County of Orange Tax Assessor's Office. And I'm glad to get staff to direct you to the appropriate persons. Thanks. Are you on the same?
I am, but I have a little bit more of a twist to put on that. So we did buy this property, and by Janet Kreitner, by the way. I'm a resident here in Garden Grove. I'm also the founder of Grandma's House of Hope, which is an organization that helps the homeless. So this is kind of near and dear to my heart, because whether my husband and I can manage this, and we couldn't ongoing, but if we could manage one property tax increase, you know, we could probably do that, you know? But I happen to make a decent salary right now, even though he's retired. But I might not retire at 62 like I thought I was if this goes and continues. And I worry more for the persons who are on a low-income fixed income that might become homeless due to something like this hitting them, because not many people have $6,000 sitting in the bank. And by the way, when it came in, it was a, it was a tax bill that looked like every other tax bill, that the kind that you have associated with your property that you think your mortgage company is taking care of. So just like a regular one, and we dismissed it when we first got it, because we figured, oh, it's included in our mortgage. And we knew the property taxes went up, because we bought a property for roughly $200,000 more than it was recently purchased for. So we were ready for that hit. We knew what that was going to be. So my concern is more for, if this is happening in that neighborhood, which is, we're off of Harbor and, help me, Pat, where'd he go? Oh, he's calling the tax assessor. It's across from Luigi's Ice, and there's a construction going on, and our house almost butts up to the big housing complex that's going on next door to it. So if that neighborhood, which is pretty low-income, is going to get hit with that kind of a property assessment in that neighborhood, I'm concerned that I'm going to end up with more people knocking on my door asking for help, because they're likely to become...
Let me apologize, but let me cut you off there and say, this is not under our jurisdiction, and it's not something that's going on in the whole neighborhood. It's specific to the fact that you just acquired a property and went through a transaction. So supplemental tax, I know a lot about this, but it's not under, it's not under our jurisdiction.
I was told to come here. I asked for some advice, and they said, you should go to city council and talk to them about it.
Well, you got to go, it has nothing to do with the city of Garden Grove or the Garden Grove City Council. You need to talk to the Orange County Tax Assessor.
Will do. And for all the rainbow people in the room, I love you.
All right, Dale Softner.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, staff. Does anybody know what 36 days is from now?
Your birthday?
Let me remind you from a quote from the July 10th, 2018 council meeting. The quote is, "Let's not let this get swept under the rug." There are a lot of good ideas out there, like the possibility of raising fines as a deterrent, reworking the access issues on block parties. There are things to be studied in this regard to make this better. There's, is a whole bunch of stuff that goes in the sky, and it's scary, unquote. Yeah, 36 days from now is 4th of July. And the issue referred to is illegal fireworks. Every year, this problem seems to get worse, so it's obvious that what we're doing to curb this issue is not working. Those good ideas mentioned in the quote do need to be studied and implemented for the safety and mental health of all the city's residents. I'm not aware that any discussions, any studies, or any changes have been done since last year. So here we are again with this issue that's under the proverbial rug, to be pulled out for a few weeks, with most of us acknowledging how bad it is, but nothing different being done to prove the situation. This year is also unique, and the city does not have a fire chief, and has a new police chief. With the holiday so close at hand, it'd be good to know what plans the fire and the police departments and city staff, Public Works, have readied and are ready to implement, and share them with the rest of the residents. We are all aware that this is a regional problem, not just a city issue. However, I feel the city must do its part to curb the intensity of the illegal fireworks. I am aware that the issue of legal fireworks sales in the city is controversial, but Garden Grove is only one of 10 cities of the 34 in the county that allow sale of legal fireworks. The use of illegal fireworks, then, can be hidden within the legal use. Also, every year, many of our city assets are expended to deter this illegal fireworks issue and could be used in other ways. The problem also is that it's not a two- or three-night event. It seems to be spreading over a longer period of time, several weeks. I heard some last night already, starting up. So I'm looking forward to what good new ideas the city is going to come up with and implement to help mitigate this serious problem. Remember, it's only 36 days away. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on any item that's not listed on the agenda tonight? Okay, that's all the cards I have for general oral communications. And so we will, close, oral communications will recess, and move on to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Bridigan?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Tuha Wen?
Here.
Member Klompfenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Wen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yeah.
And Chair Jones?
Here. We already heard oral communication simultaneous with city council, so we'll move on to consent items 2A and 2B. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Call to vote?
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? And we will adjourn to sanitary district. All righty. If the clerk could please call the roll for sanitary?
Member Bowie?
Yeah.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klompfenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Wen?
Here.
Member Tuha Wen?
Here.
Vice President Bridigan?
Here.
And President O'Neill?
Here.
So we've already done oral communications. We do have, we have a consent item, 2A, for receiving final minutes.
Moved.
Second. Call for the vote?
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay, for sanitary, we do have one item for consideration tonight. I'm not sure if there's a staff report, but this is regarding an award for a contract for sewer improvement at Westminster Avenue and Lexington Avenue. Do we have a report on that?
We should.
Okay.
Mr. Murray should be here shortly.
Here's Mr. Murray's going to give us a report.
Yay.
Item 3A is award of contract to Paulus Engineering, Inc. for project number 7835 Sewer Improvement Project at Westminster Avenue and Lexington Avenue. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, President O'Neill, and members of the board. Tonight, Santer District Board is asked to award a contract to Paulus Engineering for the construction of 670 feet of 15-inch sewer line in Westminster Avenue from Anita Place to Euclid Street, and 282 feet of 8-inch sewer pipe in Lexington Avenue from Donegal Drive to the end of the cul-de-sac on Lexington. There is a vicinity map attached to your report, so you can look at that at your reference. Also included in the work is the abandonment of the existing sewer lines and the construction of six new sewer manholes. This work was identified in our capacity assurance plan, and both were listed as high priorities. The purpose of this project is to provide required additional sewer capacity in both of those areas. All this work is to be completed at a cost of almost 600, actually, $760,000. And staff received and opened seven bids on April 25th of this year. It determined that Paulus Engineering was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the board decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in June and should be complete by September of this year. The project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with sewer funds. This concludes staff's report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Anybody have questions on the report? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? No. Call for the vote? Thank you, Mr. Murray.
All right.
Motion received. Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any other matters from board members? No. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn to the next meeting Tuesday, June 25th. Thank you, and we'll go back to council.
Thank you. We'll reconvene city council, moves on to consent items. It's recommended that 3A through 3E be acted upon simultaneously, unless anyone would like to pull an item.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, it looks like, Mr. Bridigan, did you vote no on that last?
No, I didn't.
Can we double-check the vote count on that last item?
Want to try it again, or how do you want to do it?
Rebel rouser, I guess.
So, well, the audience kind of tipped me off.
Would you like to revote?
Sure, let's try it again.
Yes, let's do that.
Okay.
Want to get it correct, right?
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay.
And actually, I think it was a technical glitch, because it showed up as eight yes votes on my screen.
Okay.
Eight.
The ghost on the end. Okay, with that being said, we'll go ahead and adjourn that and go back to city council. Okay, consent items 3A through 3E. Have a motion?
Second.
Call to vote?
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay, moving right along. Commission, committee matters, we do have one for A, which is acknowledgment of the resignation of Kevin Rogers from the Traffic Commission.
That's correct. All it requires.
Does that, does that require any kind of action, or we're just...
An acknowledgement, and then once, once you've acknowledged his resignation, then we'll move forward with posting a notice, a vacancy notice for that position.
Sad to see him go. I think he's relocating somewhere, moving out of town or something. And so we thank him for his service, and we acknowledge his resignation. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
You need a second?
So.
All right, second on your acknowledgement.
Call to vote.
Officially acknowledged.
You have been acknowledged.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay, and that takes us on to, we have no public hearings tonight. Takes us on to matters, and we have 5A through 5D, so this is 5A.
5A is introduction and first reading of an ordinance establishing a nepotism policy for boards, committees, and commissions, as requested by city council. And this ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Establishing a Nepotism Policy for Boards, Committees, and Commissions." And Mr. Sanival is here to give the report.
Mayor, members of the city council, at your last meeting, you asked that we agendize an ordinance, basically implementing a nepotism policy applicable to boards and commissions. What we have done is taken the current nepotism policy that applies to the employment of city employees, and have now incorporated into the section of the code that applies to members of boards, commissions, and committees. So basically, what the policy says is that relatives of council members, city manager, and department heads are not eligible to serve on, to be appointed to the city boards, commissions, and committees. So that's what the ordinance provides, and it amends the section of the code that applies to qualifications for members of the different commissions and boards. That's the staff report, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Any questions of staff? I move the motion to approve this.
A second.
Call to vote?
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Work from family members.
Okay, that takes us on to 5B, transmittal of the 2018 Garden Grove Safe Routes to School Phase 1 Plan.
This item was requested by city manager Stiles, and Elena Chang is here to give the report.
Amari, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. In 2016, a response to early Reimagine initiatives where the community expressed a desire to encourage more community outreach programs and advocate for student safety and health. The city applied for a statewide planning grant under SCAG and was awarded the Sustainability Planning Grant for the Safe Routes to School Plan. City council awarded the contract to KOA Corporation to partner with Garden Grove Unified School District and assist the city in selecting six target schools in the project area. The schools were selected using a needs-based criterion, which includes student participation in free lunch programs, income, high-risk bike and ped collision, and readiness to participate in the planning process. The community outreach offered an opportunity for city council members and city departments, including Public Works and PD Accident Reduction Team, to work together with the school district, PTA boards, parents, principals, crossing guards, and OC Healthcare Agency to identify challenges such as childhood obesity, air quality, and traffic congestion around schools. This is the first comprehensive Safe Routes to School Plan that has been conducted, and the city will use the plan as a guiding document to explore potential improvements when additional funding opportunities arise. I'd like to introduce our consultant, Frank... I'd like to introduce our consultant, Frank Pereira from KOA Corporation. He's going to be doing a quick presentation on the key tasks that the city requested.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Frank Pereira, I'm with KOA Corporation. I'm here to just give you a quick presentation on the project. So... All right. So as Steph mentioned, the project was awarded funding through SCAG's Sustainability Planning Grant. The project team kicked off the project in September 2017, and we completed our final plan in March of this year. Project has gained a lot of support throughout the timeline of the project through various agencies, so this actually included a lot of city staff from planning, engineering, and other divisions, as well as Police Department, council members, Orange County Healthcare Agency, the Garden Grove Unified School District, principals, parents, and the community as well. So the project objectives for this plan include improving safety for walking and biking to and from school, improve the public health by providing and encouraging active transportation options, and improving connectivity by improving the pedestrian facilities around the six schools. So the planning process, or the process for developing these Safe Routes to School Plan was comprised of three main components. The first one is community engagement, which included walk audits at each of the schools, parent surveys, teacher tallies, and a pop-up event at the Cook Elementary-Jordan Intermediate School area, which provided education, encouragement, and a chance to also gain community support, but also community feedback as well. The second is the planning process, which we reviewed relevant existing plans and studies, or we conducted analysis on existing conditions, including collision analysis and socioeconomic analysis as well. Plan preparation, and then project prioritization, which we'll cover in a minute. And then the final part was engineering, and this conducted, this involved a lot of field review at each of the six schools, engineering assessments of existing conditions and potential improvements, development of potential improvements as well, and then the cost estimates that go with the improvements for each of the schools. The Safe Routes to School Plan was developed to include potential infrastructure improvements for each of the school areas, as well as programming recommendations for each school to help them, to guide them in creating and providing programs to encourage students to walk and bike to school. So these are the locations of the six study school areas, all within Garden Grove. And the Safe Routes to School Phase One Plan includes these infrastructure recommendation plans for each of the schools, and as well as the cost estimates, and on the slide, we have kind of a total breakdown for each of the schools. This information allows for city staff to complete future grant applications to implement these recommendations. And the plan also includes discussion for funding opportunities to really help the city in identifying those appropriate funding locations for the implementation of the project.
Thank you very much for being here. Any questions or comments on this?
I just have a comment. I read through and I saw the criteria that was used to pick the schools, such as like traffic collisions that occurred, how many students were on food programs, things like that. I just wanted to mention, I just briefly mentioned this to Councilmember Klaffenstein, that I find it very interesting that none of the schools were located in District 5 or 6. I've received multiple complaints from constituents regarding specifically Lampton Elementary, the elementary school by Doig Intermediate that I can't think of right now, I think it's Riverdale, Eisenhower, I don't remember, but just interesting to see that, given some of the high traffic, deep congestion that we have in our district, so I, just something to keep in the back of our minds as we move projects like this forward, that we make sure that there's a little bit of equity when we look into doing safety programs.
Thanks much for being here, for the presentation, all the work that you're doing for us, appreciate it. This is just a receive and file, do we actually need to take a motion to receive and file?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. We receive and file? Do we have a second?
Oh, I'll say a second.
Okay, call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
A, 5C, discussion on listing proclamation declaring June 20th as World Refugee Day on the June 11th, 2019 City Council Agenda, requested by Kim Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor. Council colleagues, I would like to request that we dubbed June 20th as World Refugee Day. I think it's self-explanatory as to why, but I would like to state that we were actually requested to do this a few years ago, partially due to my fault, I didn't agendize it, and so it didn't come to fruition. I'd also like to say that last week, the mayor, myself, Councilmember Bowie, and Councilmember Tu Hau Nguyen attended an event, tacos, taco trucks at every mosque in her district and District 3, and it was bringing together the Latino, the Muslim, and the Vietnamese communities. I think that this definitely speaks to that, we're wanting to bring our communities together, show them that we're here for them, and definitely lift up those communities that are feeling threatened, or scared, or vulnerable in these times, and so World Refugee Day was acknowledged by the United Nations in 2000, multiple cities do this, the OC Refugee Forum hosts an event every year on this day that's open to the whole county, multiple organizations participate in this, as well as many residents from Garden Grove, so I would just like to see us proclaim June 20th as World Refugee Day, and I would like to make the motion to approve that, if I could get a second?
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, 5D, discussion regarding establishing a policy similar to City of Fullerton for the display of flags at City Hall is requested by Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
We want to... Want me to introduce the item first?
Please.
Okay. So at the last meeting, we had deliberations regarding flag policies and waving or displaying of the pride flag. After the meeting, I happened to have a conversation with our city attorney and our city manager, we found that the City of Fullerton issued a flag policy to give guidance for council members to display commemorative flags. We put this together and provided you that Fullerton policy. I would like to note that this doesn't include the revisions that the city attorney and myself have discussed, I would like to give him a few moments to discuss this, but before doing so, I wanted to just state that obviously we will change language from Fullerton to Garden Grove. Number two, we will revise it to include the Orange County flag, as you can see behind us, we display the Orange County flag, so we want to make sure to include that. And to clarify that the reason why it states 45 days is because Fullerton put this item forward simultaneously with passing to display the pride flag, which all the cities, Elise Ovi-Hill, Fullerton, Costa Mesa, Santa Ana, did I already, I can't remember the other ones that have the pride flag displayed on May 22nd, which is Harvey Milk Day, and then through the month of June, so that's why it's 45 days, not limited to a month. And I would like to ask the attorney to kind of speak to this item a little bit, just to give you some clarification on his end.
Well, the only thing I want to point out in terms of the Fullerton policy is that it addresses the issue of limiting the amount of requests that the City Council may consider. Number one, it only, in addition to the governmental flags, it only allows commemorative flags. So it doesn't allow flags by any group, or a specific group in particular, it just allows commemorative flags, so it has to commemorate an event or a particular recognized, I don't know what, I don't know what word to use, other than, you know, a proclamation by the federal government, or the state government, or some other commemorative event or historical event, and that's what the Fullerton policy does. And it also clarifies that it is not opening up the City Council to consider the flag polls as a public forum, is limiting that forum to government speech, so only those flags that the City Council specifically authorizes would be subject to display, and only for commemorative events, not for, you know, specific groups or for any willy-nilly request. So I just wanted to point out that that's what this Fullerton policy does, and it does allay legal issues with having to deal with future requests by other groups.
Thank you. Let me try and cut to the chase on where are you going with this, like, if you're proposing that we adopt a similar flag ordinance to Fullerton, I don't think we can do that tonight, right? We would have to...
I'm agendizing it to be approved.
So you're just agendizing it to come back to the next meeting for a thorough review at that time?
Mm-hmm.
And we couldn't possibly, even if we wanted to act upon it tonight, because...
Correct.
She just brought it up, and we just have it? What I'm kind of getting at this, because we have 25 cards times five minutes a card, we could be here for two hours on this, and then again in two weeks, when it actually comes up, assuming it gets agendized for the next discussion, so I just wanted to kind of point that out, that maybe we can fast-forward through some of this, too. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Couple of questions for Omar. Would it be possible to include a line, item within there, to say something about only one flag can be displayed at a time, so one commemorative flag at a time? So if, for instance, we had four people request, I mean, how do we go about that? Suddenly, there's just flags everywhere, how do we go about that? And maybe limit that to one per month, per, I'm not sure?
Yeah, so what Fullerton does is that, first of all, it only says commemorative flags, and that's the only other, other than a governmental flag, that's the only other type of flag that the City Council would consider, and then it's 100% subject to the City Council's discretion. So if you've already authorized the display of a particular commemorative flag, you don't have to approve any additional flags. So they have left themselves that option or flexibility, if you will. But if you want to include a limitation, that's completely up to you, and if you do decide to agendize it for the next meeting, and you would like that limitation to be included in the Garden Grove ordinance, you simply just need to let us know.
Question, does commemoration flag mean if we commemorate something, for example, if we commemorate the Black April Month, that means the Black April Month is called the Vietnamese, South Vietnamese flag, is qualified as a commemorative?
So the answer to that would be yes. You would have to decide what is the flag that commemorates that particular event.
Okay. What if a group, Group ABC, requests the City Council to commemorate something? Let's say if the Fair Housing Month, you know, are the groups, then when we proclaim that is a month or a week of something, then does that mean it is, if that group have a flag and they would like us to fly it, then they qualify as commemoration flags?
So the Fullerton policy, if you look at page 322 of your agenda, the last item, it says a city will not display a flag based on a request from a third party, so the request has to come from a council member.
Oh, only one city council?
Or more than one city council.
Third-party.
But yes, but third-party request, the Fullerton policy does not allow...
The third-party would then ask a, they have to get through one, at least one council member...
Correct.
For it to be displayed.
Correct. I mean, to be put on the agenda.
Right, right. Right. So in this case, if, what about Refugee Day? Well, we could request the flag of the Vietnamese refugee, which is a South Vietnam flag, the flag for the nation of the, of the, of the refugee. It's considered a symbol for that refugee group.
But maybe we should...
Could be. I don't know, I'm just asking, I'm not saying that that is the case, I'm just asking, probing, so that you, so that we don't get into that issue when it arrives, all right? We need to do diligent, and...
And the answer, under Fullerton policy, if it is an event that you want to commemorate, yes, a council member can bring that up, and then under the policy, the council will consider it, and the council has full authority to either approve it or deny it.
Or anything could be a commemorative flag base.
Right, it's a commemoration flag.
Okay. So this is not a public hearing item, but we do have a bunch of cards, and we pushed them to come back to, so I would suggest that before we start deliberating, we open up and we hear from the public. Would anyone like to take a break? Because otherwise, once we kick into this, this is, this is two hours. Okay, let's take a five-minute break. To public discussion regarding item 5D. I do have a number of cards. I would ask, the people try to refrain from repeating the same things. If you hear somebody else say the same thing over and over, and to keep your comments concise, you do have up to five minutes each, but if you can possibly contain it to a shorter time, keep in mind, this is at least two hours' worth of cards if everyone does five minutes each. So please get to the point. Thank you. Starting with "and in." Next is Leland Sisk, and then Ethan Nguyen.
Hi, I'm Anne. I didn't realize that it was coming like really fast. I just filled it out right now. Well, hi, I'm Anne. I'm a student at Cal State Fullerton. And during the break, I was talking to Sarah. There she is. She's Miss OC, like, not center, but like, it was really cool to talk to her. I was listening to her story. She first told her dad about her, okay, about her, about like, I guess, like, I'm really nervous right now, I'm sorry. So she first told her dad at the age of 18, and her dad told her a really sweet story. And then she told her mom at the age of 24. Her mom took it difficult at first, but then they became like a stronger family. And I really appreciated that because like Vietnamese parents, they don't know anything about the issues going on right now. And I really appreciate that she shared with me. And I really liked that her parents just supported her because that just opened my eyes. I was truly inspired by her story. And that's what I wanted to share. Thank you so much.
Leland Sisk.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and all you beautiful people here, here's a quick anecdote. I'm Uncle Hippie. I'm the old guy that escaped from the South, the deep South, the Bucklana Bible Belt. All my nephews and nieces from North and South Carolina call me to share things with me. So about six years ago, a phone rang and it was my niece. She called me and said she had something to tell me. I said, "Okay, what do you got to tell me?" She said, "Well, I'm gay." I said, "That's nice. What's this thing you have to tell me?" She said, "That's it." I said, "Oh, nobody cares." I said, "What, did you get a ring? They teach you a secret handshake or something?" She said, "No, I just..." I said, "Taylor, anybody cares?" I said, "I thought maybe you were gonna tell me that you were gonna change political parties, you're gonna vote Republican, I was gonna have to get on a jet and come back there and straighten you out." She said, "No, that's it?" I said, "Oh, come on, Taylor." I said, "Just remember this. Do you have a girlfriend?" She's going, "Yeah." I said, "Guys serious about each other?" She's going, "Yeah." I said, "Well, then just remember this. Do you love her?" She said, "Yes." Here's the important thing. You cannot choose who you fall in love with. So enjoy it. Everybody in the world wants what you got, which is somebody to love you. And as John Lennon said, whatever gets you through the night. Thank you.
Okay, Ethan Nguyen. I got you.
Esteemed councilmembers, mayor, my name is Ethan Nguyen. I grew up in neighboring Westminster, and I guess, like, together, we're all like one big family, Westminster and Garden Grove. And that also brings up my major point is like, everybody here is part of the same community. We all have things that make us unique and things in how we're born. And you can't choose who you love. You can't choose, you can't dictate what you're born as. And everybody here in this room I love. Honestly, it doesn't really, I guess what I'm trying to say is like, it's important to really recognize people and who they are, too. It's a lot of, it gives you pride in who you are. As a Vietnamese American, I see a lot of, I get a lot of pride seeing the Vietnamese flag displayed. And the same thing... And the same thing, when people's identities are able to be also recognized, they feel a lot of pride in who they are. They feel like they can't be in the shadows, they can talk about things that they couldn't talk about before. They can talk about pain, happiness, pleasure, and be able to celebrate that with other people who care about those things as well. So that's why I'm here for, all the people in this room that I love, all you people here that I respect, and that's it.
Thank you. Okay, next is Tom Raiber. After that, Joanne Ludwig, and then Nick Dibs.
All right, Tom Raiber. Yesterday, the United States of America's citizens paid homage to the men and women who laid their lives for our freedom, for our government, for the people, to the people, and because of the people. There is only one flag in America to show this. It's the American flag. With the stars for each state of the Union, for the red, white, and blue, for our original 13 colonies, this is the flag for the people. All government locations should and do uphold the standards of a proper flag code. On Wednesday, May 22, 2019, I did my own staff report. I went to the halls of Huntington Beach, Westminster, and Seal Beach, and talked with their city clerks, Robin, Christine, and Gloria. I asked each city these questions: Does their city have a flag policy? Has any organization or nonprofit want their flag flown at their city hall? And is their city hall doors open five days a week? Each city answered the same. They follow the federal flag code. They have never had an organization or nonprofit ask to fly their flag on the city hall property. And lastly, their doors to their city hall is open five days a week. I also called Buena Park City Hall shortly after our meeting two weeks ago, and their city council voted two yay, one nay, and two abstain from voting, as ours did three yays, three nays, and one was sick. When the government starts to look at each organization or nonprofit as its own identity, and then only then, the government has failed. Our city halls is not, is not a their home place or location for the people to voice their own opinion with a flag. It's a place where the government to uphold the laws that were passed, either federal, state, or local. It's a place for business, to build a home, a business, pay your bills, and lastly, a place for the people. What is a commemorative, from the dictionary, acting as a memorial or marked as an event or person? March 19, 2019, the Fullerton City Council voted for their flag policy. I'm not gonna go over everyone, but number four, a city will not display a commemorative flag based on a request of a third party, nor the city uses flag posts to sponsor an expression, expression of the third party. What was not discussed by Omar, the city attorney, was that's their policy. To do it, they also have to do a resolution, so the policy kicks in. To me, the flag policy is more of a socialist attempt to overthrow the government. Garden Grove needs to follow the federal flag code for our local government. It is these organizations and nonprofits want to fly their flag, fly at their homes, and in a parade, and leave our city hall to conduct business, laws, and codes for the people. Mayor Steve Jones, you stated on May 14, 2019, what's the difference between us and them during the discussion of the other flag? I'll tell you the difference. There are 34 cities in Orange County. To my knowledge, there's only three that allow other flags to be flown at their city hall. Though there are 29 cities that do not allow the other flag. Thank you.
Next is Nicholas Dibs, and after that is James Webb. I'm sorry, after you, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and councilmembers. I'm Joanne Ladwick, a homeowner in Garden Grove for 19 years. I know you are people of integrity. I think you'd agree with me that our, all our government policy should be based on sound principles. The decisions made for our city need to be decided after researching the facts, using common sense and financial wisdom, not on emotions. I watched speakers from the last meeting at home and then reviewed the recording again. I noticed how sincere speakers were, and how shares, and how some shared poignant personal experiences as well as their viewpoints. One exclaimed that students seeing the LGB flag, LGBT flag, as they exited Garden Grove High would be encouraged by it, despite the fact that the flag would not be flying outside within view, but posted inside city hall, unlikely to be seen by anyone except those entering the hall. I heard words such as diversity and inclusiveness. I noted that some used LGBT. Others referred to LGBTQ, or LGBTQI. One used LGBTQ+. I decided to look up the acronym and found the full version, L-G-B-T-Q-Q-I-P-2-S-A-A, which stands for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning, queer, intersex, pansexual, two-spirit, androgynous, and asexual. We all recognize the LGBT flag with six colors. We believe it represents the general LGBT community. But did you know that the original flag included pink and turquoise stripes? Or that the Philadelphia Queer Pride flag includes brown and black stripes? Or there's now a Progress Pride flag with six color bars of the LGBT flag, and a series of pointed angled color bars of white, pink, turquoise, brown, and black? There's a bisexual flag, a pansexual flag, an asexual flag, a polyamory flag, an intersex flag, and 13 others, just representing just the queer part of the movement. So I'm not sure if the LGBT flag inclusively represents all these variations of sexual expression or identity. But if not, I'm wondering how many flags we'll actually need to represent them all in order to be equitable. If we post one flag this year, will we need to add additional ones in years to come? But let's get back to the LGBT flag. In all banners, symbols, colors, and symbols have significance. Council, have you researched anything about this flag? Do you know what each of the colors represent? Have you considered that once the council recognizes and displays this flag, you send a seal of approval to other entities in our city, perhaps including the school district? Will it be okay with students, staff, and parents to have the LGDP flag posted along with the American flag, perhaps flying directly under our American flag? Mayor Jones and councilmembers Koppelstein and Tuha Nguyen, you have young children in the elementary school. Are you okay with displaying the LGBT gay pride flag at our children's elementary schools? Think other parents, do you think other parents will be? Councilmember Kim Nguyen, you've been tenacious in exhorting the council to make a prompt decision to display the flag, citing the fact that other local cities have done so. Let's recall one of Aesop's fables, the fox tail cut off by a trap. To avoid disgrace, he tried to convince his fellow foxes to quickly cut off their own tails, citing a number of fine-sounding reasons. Some foxes were quick to respond, but wiser ones convinced him to turn around and display the results. Seeing what was left of his once-beautiful tail, they quickly realized the danger of making a hasty decision influenced by peer pressure. To summarize, council decisions should be made on sound principles after research with common sense and wisdom, anticipating potential problems, like the wise foxes, not on emotions of the moment, no matter how poignantly expressed. Our city already makes a proclamation each year on behalf of the LGBT community. Adding the display of a flag, even one not in the general public view, as significant endorsement of the symbolism represented by the flag. It's well to recognize achievements and contributions made by members of our community. But displaying any other flag alongside our government flags establishes special treatment for this group, a de facto endorsement of the group, above and beyond others who do not receive such special recognition. Let's remember the decision of the wise foxes. Progress sometimes has unexpected consequences. I'd also like to say that, no, I'll finish with that.
Nicholas Dibs.
Mayor Jones and members of the council, I've already had five minutes in public comments, so I'm gonna keep this real brief. It was approved on item 3A, the adoption of the proclamation for June, for the LGBT Pride Month. Okay, what I, on this issue, what I will say, not just this issue, but the city passes various proclamations for each month. I think every month, there's some proclamation about something. I do think that we need something down at city hall, it could be near the flags, in the hallway, when you walk in, whatever. Is there something now where all the proclamations are posted for that month? I don't know. I don't think there is. I walk in the hallway, I see the photos of the councilmembers and the mayor, I don't see anything with the proclamations. So let's, let me just, you know, not everybody's gonna be happy with what I'm gonna say, but let's just take the proclamations, all the proclamations that are passed by the council, when they're passed at a meeting, they get, each proclamation gets posted for 30 or 45 days on the wall, so that everybody can see what the proclamations are that have been passed by the council, including the proclamation that you passed tonight on establishing for June. So my recommendation is, is that you post the proclamations, and that's just my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. James Webb, followed by Tracy Law, and then Roman Nguyen.
Good evening, council. My name's James Webb. I'm a Garden Grove resident. I just wanted to voice my view on flying the rainbow flag at city hall. I'm aware other surrounding cities have passed this, but I grew up in Garden Grove, as did my father, and now my kids as well. Garden Grove didn't start the Korean Business District or Little Saigon because Anaheim, Costa Mesa, Fullerton, or any other cities were doing it. I don't feel that just because other cities are doing it, that Garden Grove must do it as well. Personally, I feel this is being rushed through without the proper measures being applied as was suggested to do at the last council meeting. I believe there are good intentions behind this, and I support that. However, just because my kids may cry, doesn't mean they're going to get their way. So while V-Rock may be the majority here, they do not represent the majority of Garden Grove residents. I believe we have a flag that represents every American, and is worn by all our service members, which speaks volumes. It's one flag. The flag does not represent every resident here in Garden Grove. So that brings up the next issue. Why not the rebel flag? Why not the Jewish flag? Why not the Christian flag? Yes, there's a Christian flag. I would be open to a compromise of a proclamation of what was just suggested right now by Mr. Garden Grove may be a diverse city, but city buildings or property should be neutral. This is not about accepting the LGTB community, it's about the fact that we have one flag, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and we pledged allegiance to it before we started today. I do appreciate your time for listening to me, and I do appreciate everybody here, whether we agree or we don't disagree, but I think we still need to be respectful for those that may have a difference of opinions, because I hear a lot of negativity, and it's not, it's not nice, you know? Let's be respectful. With that said, I hope that you guys take the time to think this through, instead of rushing it just because June is right around the corner. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name is Tracy Law. I'm the executive director of Viet Rise, and I'm here joined by many other members of the community who are part of various different groups, not just one nonprofit group. I'm here today to express my disappointment with the members of the city council, who decided to use bureaucracy as an excuse to hide how anti-LGBTQ you really are. If it takes you months, up to a whole year, to create a process for flying the flag, how can the residents and workers of Garden Grove trust you to address matters that are pressing to the community? Flying the flag was an easy symbolic display, and a commitment that you are, that you are willing and that you are gonna be bold about protecting the rights and safety of the LGBT community, and you chose to do otherwise. If it takes that long to display a symbolic gesture, something that is easy to do, how can the people of Garden Grove, how can LGBTQ people trust you to protect and literally protect the rights of our community, especially to young LGBTQ people, who have some of the highest rates of suicide due to bullying, and many other factors related to the LGBTQ identity? The people of Garden Grove are here in this room with you. We work here every day, we live here, we're here asking you to take a symbolic and bold gesture, and you fail to do that. I hope you all take into consideration all the people in this room, all the people who continue to show up in this room, and all the people who continue to hold you accountable to trying to invisibilize and ignore the ass that they are making.
Roman Nguyen, followed by Lin Tran, and then Bang Larry Do.
Hello, city council, mayor. My name is Roman Nguyen. I am speaking as an ally of the LGBT community here at Garden Grove, and just want to make, you know, generic, not generic, sorry, I'm very nervous, it's been a while since I did public speaking, but anyways, we know that this country is very divided, it's very, it's, we see the politics and news, and there's a lot of hate, a lot of hate that we see in media, the TV, everything online, and I think more now than ever, I think it's up to the leadership, you all, the leaders of the city, the leadership of the state, to make stances, to make, make your, make it known that, yes, we stand behind what is right. And I think, you know, as city council, I hope that you decide to be on the right side of history. And that's, that's my comment.
Good evening, city hall council and mayor. My name is Lin Tran, and I am here today in my role as an educator and a mental health advocate, as well as the ally to the LGBTQ community. I would like to share some numbers and shed a light on some statistics that have vaguely been mentioned about the high suicide rates of our LGBTQ youth in the community. And today, I'm citing my statistics from the California Department of Education's Healthy Kids Survey, is the 2015, 2016 Orange County data set, which Garden Grove is a part of. And within this data, I would like to shed some light on two important aspects regarding mental health. Of the students who reported, who felt so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more that they stopped doing some usual activities in the past 12 months, 62% of of them identified as LGBTQ. The second statistics that I would like to share, considering the students who reported seriously considering attempting suicide in the past 12 months, 47% of them identified as LGBTQ. This is more than any affinity groups. So I'm citing these statistics to you because these are not just numbers. These are the lives of students, the future of our generations. And what these statistics are communicating to us is that LGBTQ youth are not feeling safe in their school community, let alone in their community at large. And they are having suicidal thoughts. And suicidal thoughts or suicide attempts are those that are preventable when we are recognizing the signs and we're giving the needed support when most needed. And it could be as subtle as a simple gesture. So today I am citing these statistics to you because I would like to draw your attention to these alarming numbers that keep rising in the LGBT community, especially in our youth community. And we all know that reputation and visibility play a significant role in decreasing the suicidal rates and development of serious mental health conditions. So I'm here to encourage you to take an action as simple and yet so impactful as flying the flag in the City Hall to show your support for our youth and especially our LGBT youth. Thank you.
Jared Wallace, followed by Hugh Nguyen, and then Ariana Aristegui.
Hello, council members. My name's Jared Wallace. I'm a five-year resident in Garden Grove, a teacher at Garden Grove High School, and advisor for the Gender Sexuality Alliance, previously known as the Gay Straight Alliance there at Garden Grove High School. I come to speak to you guys as a straight cisgender male at First Gen Alliance. It might seem like I have nothing to lose from this fight. That's not necessarily true. I cannot call myself an ally and not speak on this issue. Last week we were told that some of you on City Council have gay and trans friends and family members, some of you tried to make a narrative about how you've helped, how you've tried to support the LGBTQIA+ community in the past, as if that gives you a free pass from supporting LGBTQIA+ lives now in May 2019. We're also told that pride flag is not necessary to be as American flag, represents tolerance and diversity. It takes a lot of privilege to say that. Our country's flag has been a uniter as well as an oppressor for much of its history. It is not by itself always enough. Pride flag is not meant to represent a nonprofit, or a political party, or a lobbyist group, or any of the things that have been mentioned tonight. It is a representation of what a great community has gone through and where it still is left to go. Let's not make things complicated. You're all adults who claim to want to support the citizens and make them feel safe and wanted in the city. Make a compromise, make a flag policy, make us proud.
Hugh Nguyen, followed by Ariana, followed by Danielle Serio.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Hugh Nguyen, and I'm here representing VROC. I'm the founder and chair, current chair of VROC, Viet Rainbow of Orange County, as a resident have mentioned. I'm also a resident of Garden Grove since 1993, as a refugee coming from Vietnam with my family. I've been living here, went to school here, in elementary, intermediate, and high school here, and I'm also a homeowner. As well, I worked in Garden Grove. I am the director of Asian Pacific AIDS Intervention Team, APAIT, here in Garden Grove, right just down the street. I'm also a mental health expert and have worked with countless LGBTQ young people, adults, as well as their families and loved ones. So I was surprised to hear that the issue of flying the flag was, at the City Council Hall, was discussed two weeks ago. Because not too long ago, about six years ago, I was here with other Viet LGBTQ folks advocating for the inclusion of Vietnamese-American LGBTQ folks in the Thet Parade, the Lunar New Year Parade. That's why I'm hearing, I'm wearing the Nong La. So Fat Buoi, Tu Ha, and Kim, you know what this Nong La represents, right? And we wear this band, Rainbow Band, so that I can represent both identities, right? And that we do exist. We do have Vietnamese-Americans who are LGBTQ. Six months, six years ago, we were here, oftentimes trying to educate council members on the fact that being LGBTQ is not a disease, right? And that LGBTQ people also exist in the Vietnamese-American community. And so, to my surprise, this issue was brought up. So I want to thank Councilwoman Kim Nguyen for putting this item on, to be discussed, and doing the right thing and not just making the right political move, right? And so, the fact that this is being discussed shows progress, and I want to acknowledge that. However, progress is not enough, right? We need to already be there, right? Because while we're trying to work on making progress, LGBT young people are committing suicides, right? Our trans siblings are nine times more likely to commit suicide than their cisgender counterparts. LGBTQ young people are expressing depression, anxiety, and substance use at increasing rates, compare, increasingly, increasingly high rates compared to their straight counterparts. LGBT, we talk about veteran homelessness today. LGBTQ youth also makes up 40% of all homeless youth, 40% of all homeless youth. There are no, these are the realities of LGBTQ young people. These are the realities that they are facing day in and day out, right? So the issue of flying the flag is not just about representation of a nonprofit, because it's not, it's about representation of a group of people who have fought so hard to be seen, to be heard, and to be visible. The issue is about saving lives, right? As the flag symbolizes that we, as a community, see LGBTQ folks for who they are, that we love them, that we celebrate them as people, and that they are a part of this community. As public officials, as leaders, we are responsible for creating community that, a community that present every person with the utmost opportunity to not only survive or live, but to thrive. I urge you to reconsider your position, put the item on the agenda, commemorate the rainbow flag, and join Garden Grove with Costa Mesa, Anaheim, Santa Ana, and others in flying the rainbow flag. Thank you.
Ariana, followed by Danielle Serio, and then Peterson Pham.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank Councilmember Kim Nguyen for bringing this item up for discussion. Thank you very much. Thank you for being an ally and taking the time to represent your constituents and the members of the Garden Grove community at large. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Tu Ha and Mayor Jones for voting in favor of agendizing a vote at the last meeting, and Councilmember Koffenstein, thank you for also shedding, sharing that support, even though you were not able to be present at that meeting. It really does mean a lot. Last meeting, however, the members from District 1, 2, and 4 did not agree to vote on the agendizing of a vote for the flag. When Councilmember Nguyen wanted to meet halfway and propose the voting on a policy that would happen before the voting on a flag, that was also shot down. It really does shame me that this happened at the council meeting last time. I don't know how else to call it but obstructionism. It really, really did upset me. What upset me more is that we were told to wait for next year, because we're always being told to wait, wait our turn to be represented, to have our voice heard, to count as members of this community. At the last meeting, 90% of the people that spoke on this issue were in support of flying the flag. That is 90% of the speakers that showed up, came here in person. They did not hide behind keyboards, or text messages, or hateful posts on the Residents and Friends of Garden Grove page. So we are here because this issue matters, and we are here present, and we want to engage in this discussion with you, and we want you to engage in this discussion with us. We want you to be present in this as well. So please do not refuse to have a discussion on this issue, as we saw at the last meeting. We're asking, at last meeting, we asked you to agendize a vote. You are free to vote no on either of those issues, whether it's the policy or flying the flag. That is your prerogative as yourself, and, but most importantly, it should be your prerogative as a representative of your constituents, and it should be your constituents that you're representing. But I ask you, are you representing the voices of an angry few? Or will you choose to represent your community and the positive direction of your community by also taking into account those that cannot freely speak their truth? I want you to look at the people that are in this room, because the people in this room are here because this issue matters to our community. The people in this room vote, they volunteer, but most importantly, they organize. And if we are told to continue waiting, you can bet that while you think we're waiting, we are going to be hard, hard at work. So have the gumption, engage in the discussion, and represent your community.
Good evening. I'm Danielle Serio. I'm actually here specifically because my, excuse me, sir. I'm here specifically because my girlfriend owns a roller derby league that operates out of, out of Garden Grove in District 1. We work out of Chapman Sports Park, and it is entirely, it's a queer-owned, obviously queer-owned business, almost 50% queer-people as well. And so we specifically, that's why we're here. She's going to speak to that, and so I'm going to talk from a different perspective. I'm a high school teacher. I've taught in Orange County for the last seven years, and I know that a lot of people who come and speak at these things tend to be educators, right? Because we have a lot to say about the children who live in this community. And I would say that as an LGBT educator, and also specifically as a queer historian, I work a lot in LGBT history. I'm like a little concerned about the advice that council is getting from speakers about what LGBT history looks like, and the history of our flag, the history of our acronym, which actually, as an English teacher, I would like to point out, is an initialism, not an acronym. You can't pronounce it, so that's what an acronym is. And I'm concerned that if, you know, we have some people who are saying we should do more research, we should understand this community more if we're going to make this decision, I want to make sure that the council is committed to getting the right history, to doing more than five minutes of searching on Wikipedia, to make sure they understand our community, to actually reach out to people in this community for that information as well, because we are the best speakers to that history, not people who have spent, you know, four minutes on Google trying to figure it out before they get here. I would say also, as an LGBT educator, this matters a lot more than you might think to kids. There's been some speak about what this means to children. This is when kids decide whether or not to love themselves. That's a decision that I had to make when I was in high school, and it took a long time to be okay with me. And it, little things matter more than you think they do. I have pride flags in my classroom. It's the only way that my kids, well, it's not the only way my kids know I'm gay, but it's one of the ways, right? And how often I have kids that come and speak to me and decide to come out and decide to accept themselves because they saw a flag. Target right now has their pride section, if you go to the right Target, and they have a bunch of flags. We brought some, if you want one. And I had, at the beginning of my class today, I saw, my students saw that I had flags out on my desk, and they asked me what they all meant, and these are high schoolers, by the way, of 11th and 12th graders. And I explained to them what all the different flags were, and I had a student that I kind of like suspected all year might be part of our community, who came up to me at the end of class and asked if they could have one. That's the first time that kid had probably ever told someone who they might be. That flag is powerful. And so don't think this is trivial. This isn't something that just matters to a couple of us because we want to win. This is something that matters because it matters to our community as a whole in a big, meaningful way. So I ask you to think about that as a community, to know that it matters to the people who work here, who live here, who play roller derby here. This is a bigger issue than you think. Thank you.
Peterson Pham, followed by Bob Tucker, and then Julie Vo.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, council members. Hi, staff. My name is Peterson Pham. I'm currently living in District 4, under Fat Buis District. I currently also work in Garden Grove, and I've been working in Garden Grove for the past three, four years. I'm here just to share a little bit about my disappointments, but also share a little bit about my story. And I'm nervous, so hopefully that goes past your head, but hopefully the contents of what I have to share resonates in your hearts. So I'm here, like I said, as a concerned citizen, but also as your neighbor. I've been living in Garden Grove for about 20 years now, most of my life, and for a long time, I really wanted to move away. And why I wanted to move away is because I didn't feel like my city, my community, was here for me. I had many opportunities to actually leave. I only took one successfully. I went to college, and I used my education to feel powerful and to want to come back to Orange County, come back to Garden Grove to create change. And I feel as though I've been doing that. I'm currently a member of Viet Rainbow of Orange County, and I've been so for about five years. I'm currently on their board. And I was with them when we were working in the city of Westminster to make sure that people like me, people like my family, are able to feel free and to be visible within our communities. I've also been trying to make an effort to make sure that city, the city of Garden Grove has been a safe space for me and my family. I'm not the only LGBT member in my family. I've been a commissioner for the city for four years. I'm in the Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation Commission, and last month I was appointed to be the chair. This is going to be my fifth year and my third term. I am devoted, committed to the city, to my community, to my home. And to see the people who are supposed to create my home reject me, that's disappointing. It's so disappointing to see the people who are supposed to be supporters of me constantly say that I'm not enough and that I don't deserve to be here. So I'm asking you all to really reconsider your position, look at the things that you can do as, it's your responsibility to see what you can do to support your members of your community, right? It's, what I'd like to see is that, I'm asking you to agendize a vote, to make sure that you pass a flag policy that is inclusive specifically to fly the LGBT flag during Pride Month and during any other times that might be appropriate. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Bob Tucker. I live in Chapman Commons down the way. Thank you, Stephanie, for your representation in District 5. I'm an outproud gay man. I've been out since 1974, and I'm here to voice, and I've lived in Garden Grove for 12 years now, and I'm here to voice support for flying the pride and rainbow flag. I found a traditional Muslim quote that kind of fits with this. The quote goes like this, "A lot of different flowers bake a bouquet." For the LGBTQ community, the many colors of the rainbow flag symbolize the diversity within not just our community, but many communities. In our diversity, we are recognizing there is beauty as well as strength. Heard folks talk about the suicide rate of LGBT kids. Still quite high, as you heard. I hope with the flying of the flag that the LGBTQ students and youth in this community can see that flag and feel accepted, and maybe help, maybe help give them a little more hope. Harvey Milk said, "All men and women are created equal. No matter how hard someone or some people try, they can never erase those words." That is what America is about. He also said, "Rights are won only by those who make their voices heard." I hope you hear our voices tonight and support the flying of the flag. I hope you hear our voices tonight and support the flying of the flag.
Julie Voe, followed by Janice Mina, and then Mai Nguyen.
Dear Mayor Jones and council members, my name is Julie Voe, and I am a resident of the city of Garden Grove in District Four, and an active member of this community, serving on boards focused on the arts, youth empowerment, and environmental justice. I'm here tonight to voice my concern and dismay response to the three-three vote at the last council meeting, to not consider flying the Pride Rainbow Flag, an outward expression of the city's support of the LGBTQ community. Is this what Garden Grove is about? As a resident, I recall a sense of excitement and new vision for the city of Garden Grove over the last few years, with a desire to revitalize, to reinvigorate, to renew the city through various initiatives like Reimagine Garden Grove Open Streets. If those here have not heard of this, inaugurated in two thousand fourteen, Reimagine Garden Grove Open Streets is a citywide initiative aimed at creating unique public spaces through innovative and fun experiences promoting pedestrian and bike-friendly spaces. I quote from a published story, "This is an exciting accomplishment for the city," said Mayor Jones. "Reimagine Garden Grove Open Streets events help further our position in Orange County as a progressive city, ready to reimagine its future." I appreciate those words and the idea, and your vision, Mayor Jones, but the idea of open streets is to bring people out, to enjoy our city, to interact, to connect, to make this a place where people want to be seen, to see and be seen, to be visible, not invisible. The decision that the council made in its last meeting stands in direct contrast to everything that open streets represents. What it really says is that fear and hate dictate the decisions of some members of this council, that you will fold to a closed-minded and snarky minority in the city who are resistant to change, like to retell fables, and insistent on closed-mindedness and hate. I was disappointed in the decision. I am disappointed by the flagrant remarks made by Councilmember Fat Buoi and others here tonight to justify a decision not to fly the flag, that if we fly the Rainbow Flag, that sets a precedence that could lead to others, like the Communist Flag being shown. What kind of fear-based logic is this? What does reimagine in Garden Grove look like? Perhaps to reimagine is to first acknowledge that there is a history in our country and in our city of hate, those who cling to hate and exclusion because they don't want change and progress. If we're really trying to be a progressive city that reimagines what Orange County communities can be like, how does a decision like this live up to that? I had the honor of attending a community event in Garden Grove just last Friday, which Councilman Kim Wing mentioned, Taco Trucks at Every Mosque at the Islamic Society of Orange County. It was a beautiful event that, to me, aligns with this concept of reimagine in Garden Grove, that we need to be willing to recognize the history of discrimination and hate in order to forge a new community, to uplift those who have not have, who have been unseen and invisible throughout history. I was really proud to be in Garden Grove on Friday, but tonight, I stand here feeling very disappointed. I hope that this council rethinks the decision and chooses to be open and live up to the vision that you have expressed for the city. Tonight, let's reimagine Garden Grove to be a city of love, acceptance, integrity, and compassion, and leave behind hate, closed-mindedness, and fear. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Janice Mena, and I am seventeen years old, and I am the first student to ever start and create a GSA at my high school. If you don't know what GSA club is, I, that's my job to explain to you. GSA club stands for Gay Straight Alliance, or either Gender and Sexuality Alliances, in which creates a safe space and inclusive space in schools. As you can see, the LGBT community is very important to me, especially that I am very open about my identity. I represent someone who many people would discriminate or look differently to people. Yo soy una latina, I am a woman, sorry, and openly pansexual. I am not a nonprofit organization. I am a part of the LGBT community. Keyword, "community." Ooh, okay, sorry. I am not only here to represent my high school, but I am here to stand beside my community in order to have the Pride Flag being put up during Pride Month. I, along with everyone with Rainbow Pride in and outside this room, want this for our community. Garden Grove is our home, my home, and I grew up here. I have lived here ever since I was born, and it's my safe space. But it has been very quiet. I know you have mentioned in previous meeting, in the previous meeting, that this will create hatred and divide people in Garden Grove, but there will only be people who will disagree, as you can see. With the Pride Flag being put up, this will create an inclusive environment for our future generations. I want this more than anything for myself and for my little sister who's in the room, and for all of the youth who are growing up and noticing all the hatred and division in our city and country has become. Having Garden Grove put up the Pride Flag will not divide us, but it will bring Garden Grove together. Please make a good decision and put the Rainbow Flag up. I will be more than happy to let you borrow it. I will be happy to, but thank you so much.
Mai? Am I, is it me or Mai?
Well, it's pronounced Mai, but you can call me Mai.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that. And then, followed by Eun Hong, and then Tim Pham.
Hello, Mayor, and city council members. My name is Mai Nguyen, and I work at Accord, a nonprofit organization here in Garden Grove. I know we're here, we're here to talk about agendaizing this conversation about flag policy, but I wanted to dig deeper and to have that conversation about flying the Pride Flag. But I would also like to hear city council talk about cultural competency. As I know, V-Rock is willing to offer free LGBT cultural competency throughout this conversation, but I'm also here today speaking to you from the lens of someone who survived. Born from the city of Vietnam, I came here to America at the age of six. Even when I knew that, even then, I knew that America is my hope, that America is the land of the free, that America is an idea, that everyone deserves life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. But it hasn't been like that, not for people like me. As a young boy, aged fifteen, I found myself homeless, hungry, and given up. After my first suicide attempt, I woke up seeing a system, a broken system, that wasn't created for me. How can I address my mental health when the reason I am homeless and hungry is based on the reason of who I love? I was very fortunate to have found hope, not in an idea, but to see the actions of others fighting for that idea, the idea of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I'm here looking to see that hope in you, to take that action. This flag not only represents the LGBT community, it represents our story, my story, and many others that might not, that have not survived to tell it. I'm asking you today to send a message to our youth that is currently going through what I'm going through, that the city of Garden Grove accepts you, is proud of you, and will represent you. I'm asking you today to send a message to our community that Garden Grove is not just an idea, not an idea of life where residents live, but to grow, not an idea of liberty where residents don't see that their city represents them, not an idea of the pursuit of happiness when marginalized communities are constantly underattacked or underrepresented. And I want you to hear these answers today, not just of my voice, but the voice of those that may not have spoken up, to these two questions. When your community is under attack, what do you do? When your community is underrepresented, what do you do? Thank you.
Eun Hong, followed by Tim Phan, and then Jesse Ramirez.
It's a win. I know, it's hard. So hello, all. My name is Nguyen, and I was here at the last city council meeting regarding the discussion on flying the LGBTQ flag in City Hall during June. I drove all the way from LA to speak again, because it's, I'm probably, to speak again, sorry. And since I'm going to be talking for a while, and probably for, I guess, a couple of days, bureaucracy, right? I feel like you should probably understand a little bit about me, because after all, let me remind you, I am your constituent. I was born and raised here, and I call Garden Grove my home. So if anyone, if there's anything anyone knows of me, is that I am proud to be where I'm from. For proof, I have here a photo of me when I graduated UCLA with my two master degrees, is with the Little Saigon Garden Grove City Hall, oh, City, sorry. Pass it around if you want to see it, you know. Sign it later if you want. I'll be back, you know what I mean? So, as you can, for my graduation celebrations, thank you. Being Vietnamese-American and being from Garden Grove is part of what defines me as me. And it seems to me that there are people in the local government who have forgotten about some key definitions that they should know as an elected official. The first term I would like to remind you all is representative. A representative is a person chosen to act or speak for others. A quick Google search will show the LGBT history in Garden Grove. There have been, and currently are, so many LGBTQ folks who call Garden Grove their home. Who are you speaking for? And who are you representing? I guess you won't care for people that you've never cared for. You cannot say you are an ally to the LGBTQ community when they say contrary. Your community members are literally saying contrary behind me. Allyship is not self-defined. It is not an identity. It is not an end goal that you reach, or a checkbox you can mark, or an award and photo op that you can give to local nonprofits. It's a process. You can't just say you support the community behind closed doors. You have to do it with your actions, and for all to see. Allyship is not passive. A quick Google search will also show the history of violence towards LGBTQ folks in Garden Grove. Garden Grove is one of the lower-ranked cities in Orange County for LGBTQ inclusivity. You cannot bring a community together without acknowledging that there is a huge divide. There has been, and currently are, so many LGBTQ folks living in Garden Grove who are waiting and wishing that they can feel safe in their hometown. Flags in general, I feel, don't do a lot, but it's a good first step to healing the deep scars that a community holds. Seeing the Rainbow Flag could help save someone's life in the future. It shows that Garden Grove is indeed trying to be a safe city for all those who call home. And for a note for all the folks saying like, "Oh, there's one flag on unity," for, I would like to kind of put in my own perspective, a tangent sign of, sorry, I have five minutes. For those who see the American flag, might look at unity, but for me, it reminds me of my rape. Just laying that out there. Seeing that their city council voted not even to talk about it doesn't show bravery. It doesn't show cooperation, integrity, empathy, respect, and quality service, which are city values, wow, at all. It shows that Garden Grove doesn't care to acknowledge the struggles and beatings that LGBTQ folks had on its streets. It shows that a good handful of the Garden Grove city council members will only care about a select few in their community, but not all, not is until it's beneficial for them. Talking about a Rainbow Flag will only be a hassle for the elected officials on the city council who want to be a representative for themselves, who want more bureaucracy as a buffer to keep themselves away from the people they're supposed to serve. How far removed are you from your people you represent? From Orange County? From California? Who do you truly represent? And how does that representation define who you are? Garden Grove is an important place to me, and I am an important place, important place, oops, important part of Garden Grove. What is your definition of Garden Grove? Because there are many people standing in this room that are falling through your woeful cracks, but we don't have to be. Tonight could be the beginning of a new definition of a Garden Grove with potential and promise, or tonight can be a defining moment to your legacy on this council. It's your choice, it's your move. We're waiting and we're watching. Thank you.
Tim Phan, followed by Jesse Ramirez, and then Sarah Jean.
Hello, council. My name's Tim Phan. I've been at your strawberry festival three days in the last three days. Great, like funnel cake. Thank you for that. I wanted to tell you that apparently there are people in this community and the council itself that says, if you put a non-governmental flag, like the beautiful Pride Flag, you must be obliged to entertain requests for other flags. What's to stop us from putting up Nazi flags, Confederate flags, Wakanda flags, Communist flags, and so on and so forth? The answer was already in your report that Kim filed. The Supreme Court says that as a government organization, the city is allowed to express itself under the government speech doctrine. This means as long as you don't violate or show preference for a religious faith, or encourage a certain vote in an election, you can display any commemorative flags you want. And because you are speaking as a government entity, you are not barred by the Free Speech Clause of the First Amendment, and can engage in viewpoint discrimination. So that means if I put up the Lakers' flag this month, you don't have to put up the Clippers' flag, you know? But I wouldn't put up any of those flags, because the Lakers are doing really poorly, and we should not be worth that. So if you have no legal argument to stand on, it must be some political or cultural bias to oppose this extremely reasonable request. Maybe you'll say that we've already given you a little bit, you're being too divisive, you've already gotten some representation, et cetera, et cetera. But the people in this room know that the history of social progress and justice in this country and the world has seen these arguments before. They've also seen and heard that you say we have one flag. Let me ask you, what flag was flying outside Manzanar when they took citizens and told them that they were no longer citizens? What flags were here awaiting the slave ships in the eighteenth century? What flag stood outside City Hall when California voters voted for Prop Eight? What flag was outside the White House just last week when this administration is rolling back transgender protections against our community? I ask you all these not to make you feel bad about this country and where it's been, because as you know, every flag carries the stains of blood and tears through the years. It's struggle, it's progress, and it's backlash. The cycle just repeats on and on. But I'm feeling like more compassionate towards y'all than I've, you know, I feel like I should be. I'm going through a lot of, you know, deep emotional stuff lately, and I actually do have a lot of compassion for all of you, even the people who oppose these arguments. I was happy to see members of the council at the Taco Trucks at Every Mosque event, and to see that it was a diverse group of both parties, of both political parties, and I know that this is not a political issue, because ultimately, the people in this room are here today for love. We love our family members, we love our friends, our communities, regardless of our preferences. And I don't think anyone is here for anything other than that, to say that, you know, it's not your preferences that define you, it's your actions and your votes. Because honestly, council members, nothing you say before the word "but" matters. Only your votes do. I know, our eyes are watching, and we hope that you make the right decision. We hope that you continue to make progress and stand up for our communities, and I thank you for the time, and I thank especially the people in this room, this community, and all the people who are still waiting to find that identity that says that, like, you know, the flag, that speaks to me, because they're watching, and so are we. Thank you.
Jesse?
You got it. Sarah Jean, followed by Lena Tran, and then Sarah Ann Nguyen.
Mayor Jones and council members, thank you for opening up this time for us to speak on this issue that a lot of, well, I guess everyone here is somewhat passionate about it in some way or another. And as my girlfriend said earlier, I am the owner of a roller derby league that is in District One, and we've been a league here, playing at Chapman Sports Park for the past six years, and I've joined the league two years ago. I became the owner of the league earlier this year, and as a person of the queer, the LGBTQ plus community, it says a lot if the city that I that I run my league in, which as she mentioned, over 50% of our league members are queer and we're, that's gonna grow to probably closer to 90% because we recruit a lot at queer events. And so it's just gonna grow. And what, the reason why I came today, I found out through Sarah Anwin, who will be speaking later, that this was talked about at the last city council meeting. And I was outraged, especially thinking about the community that I'm here representing, just like you are here, representing your community of all colors, of all sexualities. And I'm not a, I don't live here in Garden Grove, but I am here at least twice a week. And again, representing women who come to play a sport and be empowered and I want them to feel safe in the place that we play. Because it is our home base and it has been for six years. And I wouldn't want to try and find another place because I don't feel that I or my community is safe. We do practice at night and outdoors. And it's mostly women. 99% of the time, it's just women there. So my biggest reason for coming is that I want us to feel represented and safe. And I think just my advice is to think about what does it say about what you think of your community if you do not put the flag up for 45 days of the year? That's the minimum, I believe, that is being asked to commemorate Stonewall, Harvey Milk, and then just all of the people, part of the community that came before Harvey and before Stonewall and everything. So thank you very much for this time and I hope that this does get agendas to be voted on. And I will be coming every Tuesday that I'm available, which is most Tuesday nights. So this is the first time I'm here and definitely not the last. Thank you.
Lena?
Also, we're actively recruiting, I have flags.
Hello, good evening, city council. My name is Lena Tran and I'm a youth organizer at Viet Rise in Garden Grove. And first, I want to thank you for allowing us to, allowing me to speak on this item. I attended last city council meeting on May 19th on an item displaying the LGBTQ plus flag in City Hall. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I felt saddened and disheartened to see that Garden Grove did not consider the potential flying of the LGBTQ plus flag in a month of Pride Month. All about me is that besides being a youth organizer, I don't personally identify as LGBTQ plus, but I'm an ally to this community. As a student, friend, and youth advocate, I feel helpless when I see these groups of people feel less than because of the constant slurs thrown at them, killing themselves because of their own identity, or my own Vietnamese-American LGBTQ plus friends who tell me that their fathers beat them when they came out, told them that this identity is not real, and pushed them to therapy in order to fix themselves. I want to remind you that in the last meeting, you told me that this is a city of compassion. Compassion means cultivating understanding, love, and in ourselves and then for others. If we don't unpack and understand ourselves for a person who goes through the journey of recognizing their LGBTQ plus identity and how much pushback they face in society, we're not able to be compassionate to this community. Therefore, I'm asking the police to understand and try to take a step to have the LGBTQ plus flag presented at the Garden Grove City Hall so that I know that this city has compassion towards this community. Thank you.
Sarah Anwin followed by Jeff Laterno followed by Chuck Jones.
Hi, Mayor Jones and council members. My name is Sarah Anwin and I have lived here majority of my life. Graduated at Pacifica High School and actually went to school here at St. Columbas. I'm proud to be at Garden Grove. But it was, it came to my attention when I took this role that as Ms. OC Pride, that I'm the first Vietnamese-American to take this pride title, to showcase visibility, acceptance, equity, and equality for all. It's funny that years ago when I worked for a nonprofit, that somebody told me the history of Garden Grove. And that history is that we were as big as we hope. Our LGBTQ community was on Garden Grove Boulevard. How many people knew that? Not a lot. And when I share that story, people are in disbelief. People are like, "Oh, you're in Garden Grove?" We have a history and I believe we need to honor it. And not only that, to show that we have a pride flag in Garden Grove will speak volumes not only for our constituents, but also as a role model for others. We need to stand up, stand out for the people, for our community. Because if I saw that pride flag when I was younger, it would probably give me a lot more hope, a lot more respect for my city. I want to continue to say I am proud to be raised in Garden Grove. I don't want to turn my back and I'm pretty sure you don't want to turn your back on your community. So I hope that you consider your position to support your community, support equity and equality for all. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of the council and especially council member Win for taking this courageous step. I'm gonna sort of explain a little bit about me so you know, so you know where these comments are gonna come from. So first of all, politically, I'm the North Vice Chair of the Democratic Party of Orange County, the party that has, has enshrined in its platform, the respect and commitment for all marginalized communities. We have over half a million registered Democrats in Orange County and it grows by the day. But that's really the lesser of all these other things. Having turned 63 last week, so I was born in Missouri in the segregated South. And today, I'm married to a Filipino immigrant and a proud, out-gay person and officer in a party. So I've come a long way. And I look at this room and was with many of these people when they fought for the inclusion in the Tet Parade in Westminster. And the courage I saw there, new, made me know that the future was gonna be bright for not only the LGBTQ plus community, but for all marginalized communities. But so you've heard the statistics, I won't follow up with those, but let me also add, I'm a person who's been living with HIV for 30 years and most of the people I know my age are dead. And that sort of leads into why, the subject of why it's important that this flag be flown, right? It's not, it's not only that it instills hope and pride in people, but it's a recognition that many of those statistics are fueled by the fact that there is institutionalized homophobia at almost every level of government in this country and always has been. Now, let's talk a little bit about the history of Garden Grove. As the previous speaker said, this was it. This was Garden Grove was the place, even, I mean Laguna was the place you went to have fun on the weekends or to go to the beach in the summer. But this up-and-down Garden Grove Boulevard is where people crawled out of the closet, windowless bars that people snuck in and out of. You know, the second oldest LGBTQ plus center in the country is here, right? Founded and home in Garden Grove. I used to be the vice chair of that organization. And half the organization was the center and the other half was the AIDS response program. And it did incredible work at a time when our government, starting with Ronald Reagan, who did nothing for years, just, and blocked every attempt to stop the dying. And almost every state had no protections at all. And certainly, cities were either indifferent or openly hostile. And this city was openly hostile. And council member, you are a member of the LAPD or were, I'm sorry, I don't know if you still are or not, so I doubt you can deny this happened because I've had former Garden Grove police officers, when I teach classes, come up and tell me that they were part of this, how you systematically raided those bars and drug people out. And I stood outside those bars and was humiliated while that happened. And it cannot be an accident that at one point, there were half a dozen or more thriving LGBT bars on Garden Grove Boulevard and now there is one. It is a systematic policy of homophobia that I wanted to close my remarks with as to why this is such an important thing. So you could sort of look at what happened in Anaheim, right? There's, they flew the flag on the pole the first year and then on the side of the building. And there was this argument within our community, more people can see it on the side of the building, right? That's not the point. The point is a recognition that this city, and this gentleman here and then the other woman talked as if it was us and them. We are everybody in this city, all ages, all jobs, all, we're Republicans, Democrats, blue-collar workers, teachers, surgeons, we are everybody. There's no us and them. And council member Bowie, you do such an excellent job advocating for your community because you feel the pain and the need to right the wrong of government oppression. And I ask you to put yourself in our perspective right now and think about why it's important that that flag fly. It is just so strong of a message for people to see their government recognizes that they exist, but also amends for its sins of AIDS phobia and homophobia and transphobia that occurs even today. So please do the right thing. Thank you again.
Chuck Jones and then last but not least, Jesse Ramirez if he's back.
Good evening. First, I'd like to say thank you. I know it's a long night. I know some of you are kind of taking a beating tonight. I will try and take it easy on you. I just want to address one thing I know at the last council meeting and it was mentioned a couple times tonight about people serving in the military and the flag representing us. You know, it dates all the way back to 1778 in the Continental Army when Frederick Enslin was kicked out of the Continental Army for being a gay man. We have fought to fight and die under that flag. We fought through the Articles of War under the United States of 1916. We fought Don't Ask, Don't Tell. And currently, our transgender brothers and sisters and those who don't identify are being banned from serving in the military. So once you start fighting for us to fight and die under that flag, that flag, as much as I love it, it doesn't always represent our community. You know, as you know, my name is Chuck Jones and before I go on, I'd like to start with a quote from Baynard Rustin. He's a civil and gay rights activist who worked alongside Martin Luther King to help organize a march in Washington in 1963. He said this, "When an individual is protesting society refusal to acknowledge his dignity as a human being, his very act of protest confers dignity on him. Tonight, myself and the entire LGBT community are claiming that dignity. Growing up in Garden Grove, I always knew there were gay bars in the city, but it wasn't until later that I realized how gay it was. Over the course of six decades, there were more than 30 different establishments catering to the LGBTQ community. There are numerous bars and restaurants that dotted Garden Grove Boulevard. Garden Grove's first LGBT center was located in the city. The only remnant of the once queer community is a single bar, The Frat House, but the history remains. One would think that with such an active queer community that the city must have been very open and accepting. That was and, as you can see, is still far from the case. On May 14th, 2019, the city had an opportunity to begin healing decades-old wounds and make up for past transgressions against the LGBT community and residents. Council Kim Nguyen wanted to make a simple gesture and add an agenda item that would put up to vote the possibility of displaying the pride flag inside City Hall. The fact that her fellow council members would not even allow it to be put on the agenda based on the lack of a flag policy and the hypotheticals of people wanting to fly a communist flag, or as council member Patrick Bowie stated, a Muslim flag, was thinly veiled homophobia. The same type of unfounded and frankly hysterical "where does it stop?" arguments have been used against the LGBTQ plus community and marginalized minorities for decades. The council member from District Two, John O'Neill, called the issue divisive. Celebrating diversity and inclusiveness is not divisive, but trying to silence and hide a segment of the population because of who they are is. In 1964, LGBTQ establishments started popping up along the main thoroughfare of Garden Grove Boulevard and no sooner did they open the bars, owners and patrons suffered incessant harassment at the hands of the city and the Garden Grove Police Department. One of the earliest examples of this is the 1968 court case, People versus Mesa. It outlines a systematic harassment and details the use of entrapment sanctioned by the city of Garden Grove. In court documents, it explains in detail how a Garden Grove vice officer, Officer Ricketts, went into The Mug, a local gay bar, and solicited sex with a bar patron named Gilbert Mesa. Once Mesa consented to the officer's sexual advances, the officers led him outside and arrested him for lewd conduct based only on his willingness to have consensual sex with another man. Mesa was later convicted in the court by the city and its attorneys. These type of sting operations continued well into the 70s. After a rash of 40 arrests, and I've talked about this before, in 1974, just five years after the Stonewall riots, the queer community in Garden Grove said enough. And on September 7th of that year, over 500 people took to the streets and marched a mile and a half from DOK West, which was a popular bar at Hester and Garden Grove Boulevard, and marched to Garden Grove City Hall demanding to be treated equally. This was Orange County Stonewall moment. The 1980s also proved to be a trying time for the queer community in the city. Orange County's first LGBTQ center at the time, named the Garden Grove, the Gay Community Center of Orange County, was located on Euclid Street and was repeatedly vandalized. Bricks and rocks were thrown through the windows and several arson attempts made. Instead of the city taking action to fight against or prevent the vandalism and arson attempts, the center was simply told to remove their sign to avoid further destruction and harassment. The sign remained. The center did eventually move to another location further down Garden Grove Boulevard and soon after they did, their old location was firebombed. That wasn't just inaction and there wasn't just inaction and institutionalized homophobia by the city, but in 1983, there was an actual call of violence by a sitting city council member. When discussing the gay community, council member Raymond Lutrell said, "If it walks like a duck, talks like a duck, then it is a duck, shoot it." In 1985, the city of Garden Grove lost a federal lawsuit against it by the owners of Max Landing, a local gay bar. The lawsuit alleged that police consistently harassed and intimidated patrons by sitting in the parking lot all day long and taking pictures of people entering and leaving the establishment, eventually forcing it to close. The courts found this to be true and awarded the bar owners $110,000. The city, of course, appealed this decision. Once again, in 1991, gay rights protesters took to the streets of Garden Grove and across the state in response to Governor Pete Wilson's veto of major gay rights bill, AB 101. Garden Grove police officers arrested 16 demonstrators after they linked themselves arm-in-arm, creating a human chain and refusing to move from a major intersection. Only one counter protester was arrested. Now, that brings us today. And one of the agenda items was declared June as LGBT Pride Month. While I agree and I thank you, this is progress for the city. I believe that declaring June as LGBT Pride Month without displaying the flag is a city saying, "You can exist, but we don't want you to be visible." The Stonewall riots may have been 50 years ago, but the fight is far from over. If none of that is enough, and I'm gonna veer off here real quickly, there is a, Gay Days at Disneyland is in October. There's 30,000 queer people that ascend onto the resort district. As you can see, we mobilize. Those are tax dollars for our hotel rooms. So if none of that matters, let the money talk. The arc of history has always been in the favor of inclusion and diversity. We can see this as we look back over the past. So how do you want history to tell your story? I'd like to leave you with this. Homosexuality exists in over 450 different species. Homophobia only exists in one. So what are you so afraid of?
Jesse Ramirez, no? Gone? Okay. That's the last card I have. Is there anybody else wishing to speak or did I cover it? Is there anybody else wishing to speak, or did I cover it all? Okay. That, with that, we will close public comments.
I would like to motion to agendize the flag policy for the next meeting to include the amendments for the county flag, and open to hear if council members have other suggestions before we, someone hopefully secondes that. Or you can second it and we can vote.
I will second it.
I guess everyone's looking, I guess I'll go first. Honestly, emotion is a, is a funny thing. And we have various folks come up here and be, if you have a difference of opinion, and it's not that you have difference of opinion, it's you, you become labeled racist, homophobic, uncompassionate, can't just be a logical difference of opinion. You gotta have all these other things projected onto you just because you don't necessarily see eye to eye with something. Emotion usually leads us down a path that we don't want to go down in the long run. Not always. Sometimes emotion's a good thing. You know, I heard, you know, you, you got to be in lockstep with the way we believe or that proves you don't have support for us. I've heard all these falsehoods that they, that some of the speakers, not all, some of the speakers tend to project onto people that disagree with them. Quite frankly, I'm offended by that. You know, you can do what you want, be offended however you want to be, but I am offended, you know? Yeah, I think that's just emotional, illogical thinking, straight and simple. You can have a difference of opinion as an adults and not hate each other. It is, it is the truth. So with that being said, I don't necessarily think we have to have, I, I think we need a flag policy. I do think we need a flag policy. I said that at the last meeting, and I stand by that. However, I disagree with the fact that, you know, we gotta rush to slap another city's flag policy into our policy, throw our name on top of their policy, and rush it through. You know, they talk about bureaucracy. Yeah, yeah, sometimes it's a bad thing. But what they're really saying when they say, oh, they don't want the bureaucracy, is they don't want to hear from what the other part of the community is wanting to hear, the other input that we would get. You know, the reality is, a flag policy needs to be done and it needs to be done properly. We need to have public hearings, community meetings. Heck, we can't even move a swing set in a park without having a poll on the internet. But yet, for this, we're gonna just rush it right through without hearing any input from anybody other than a group of folks who showed up at one meeting. Well, this wasn't on the other meeting. You know, again, this, this thing, I, I do think we need a, a policy. I, and I said that at the last meeting. I just don't know that this is the policy that we want to go by. Maybe it is. Maybe this is what, exactly what we need. But I'd like to hear, and do this properly. I'd like to hear from the, the rest of the community and, and do this properly. If not, just a blanket, no non-governmental flag policy. I, I know some people don't want to hear that, and I, and I understand what you think you're, you're, the gay pride flag represents to you, and I, and I'm, and I get it. But it, 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 for some people in our community, the gay flag doesn't have the same meaning as what it means for you. It really doesn't. I get what it means for you, but it doesn't mean that way for everybody. Just like some speaker said, "The American flag doesn't represent them." One, one speaker said it reminded, reminded her of a rape that had occurred. Another one said it didn't represent them because of some past history applications. But the, the reality is, that flag represents all Americans, whether you want, want it to or not. So, you know, I, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of doing a flag policy. Am I in favor of this and just throwing Garden Grove on top of Fullerton's? No, I'm not.
John, go ahead.
Go down the line. So very emotional appeals, and I can appreciate that. I stood here last year and held the gay, the flag when we did the proclamation last year. As you noticed tonight, I think it was a 7-0 vote for the proclamation again. My problem is, you know, I didn't find out about this until the night before that last meeting, but I, my stance has always been, and you can check the record, I, my stance has always been is we do have a flag policy. The flag policy is the last, past 63 years of only having governmental flags. And that's where I still am, and it's not really about me. It's not about me. I truly represent the people that, of Garden Grove that elected me, and I believe that I'm casting the vote for them. I've been here my entire life. I know my constituency. I know this city. And, and the city that I've known, I, I know these other...
Where are they?
I'm just speaking to the, I, I'm out there talking to them every day. So I don't want to make my emotion get into it, but obviously it drains over and, and I to, I'm not, I take offense, as does my counterpart here. I take offense when somebody directly points me out and threatens like political office or, or call me a homophobe or whatever. You don't even know me. You have no idea. I'm a very loving person. I love everyone equally. I am sitting in this capacity to make the best vote I have, knowing the majority of the constituents that I represent, and that's where I'm standing. And I stand that we have a 63-year policy of having governmental flags, and that's where I stand. I don't, even after with all the emotional statements we had tonight, it doesn't sway my vote still. And I don't, I'm not going to vote in favor of this particular item because it particularly says a policy similar to the city of Fullerton for display of flags at City Hall as requested. I, I'm open to discussing a flag policy, but not this particular worded as far as Fullerton's. It would have to be a new flag policy derived directly from, from us, from us. But anyway, that's where I'm going to end this.
I think I'm just really curious to understand where the issue is with the Fullerton policy. I, I think I've asked the city attorney to kind of provide his legal advice and, and why this is appropriate or not, and how it protects us as a city or not. As far as I know, this doesn't have to go to public hearing, correct Omar? Does this have to go to public hearing?
Not unless the council wants a public hearing.
Before, before we, we talk further into what we want and what we do not want in the, in the flag policy, may I take a moment to address, you know, the folk that have been expressing first question on my viewpoint? And, and I hope to, you know, ask you to be patient and listen to me first, and then if you don't agree with me, you know, I, I, I can understand it, but at least, you know, allow me the time to express my, myself without interruption. In my political life, I have been calling names quite a lot, and you guys have been as well. I am one of the most anti-communist. I stand and I passionate about fighting for human rights, helping to be the voice for those who do not have the, the right to, to speak out in Vietnam. And yet, many people in my community, in my Vietnamese community, label me as communist sympathizer, communist agent, and they also blame me for, wrongly blame me for selling Garden Grove to communist China, why I have never done so. I'm also being labeled for dividing the Vietnamese community because I speak out against those who I view that causing harm to the Vietnamese community. And because of that, I'm labeled for, you know, devising my own community. But as for, as for the LGBT, I do have very many close friends who are lesbian. I do have relatives who are in the LGBT. And if you go back to the Ted parade history, starting from the very first year in 2013, that very first year, I was not the chairman or even the important person in that committee other than being one of the member, and we took the vote, democratic vote in that committee to allow LGBT to, you know, present or not. So in the first year, you guys were allowed to, to participate. In the second years, you guys are not allowed to participate. That is what I, I remember. My, I might mix up with the years because it's been a while now. And then you LGBT sue the, sue the organizing committee, and you lost, and that year you, you did not allow to participate. But then in the following years, I start to lobby behind the scene, the committee to allow you to come back to the Ted parade. And yes, that year you were allowed, but you guys are probably close to the very last to parade, and that was not fair for you. And then in the following years, you guys moving up. In the last three years, 19, 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019, I became the chairman of the Vietnamese community. And with that title, I become the chairman of the Ted parade committee. I start to slowly to help you a little more, even though I got linked for it. I will not name names, but there are many organizations who blame me for allowing LGBT group to parade and hold the rainbow flag or rainbow banners in the parade. But I, I stood with you. Last year, you guys are not the last. You guys paraded, you know, very, very early, not in the beginning, but, but, but not the last at all. And it was based on a few criteria, one of which is the time that, that the organization submit the application and a few other, like, because we need to even out the fraud and the machine, the, the student matching ban and other things. So, so we have quite a few criteria. But you certainly are not the last, and even though you submit the application not early. It, it's so that I do want, I do value you. Now, you might, you maybe, my, some of my vote may, may disappointed you because I didn't go all the way in term of voting for the display of the pride flag in the City Hall. And, and, and I really feel bad that, you know, I didn't go, go all the way for you guys. But if you label me as I am not supporting you, I think you, you misunderstood and misjudged me. I do support you, but I have other viewpoint too. For example, one of that viewpoint is my belief that the City Hall being a government body, we should not have certain action that may be viewed as forcing a view on another groups. So in this, in this case, why I feel it is important to support a resolution to recognize June as the LGBT month. But if I vote yes to allow the display of the LGBT flag in the City Hall, there might be other group of president who feel, who might not agree with you. And we are, by voting that, I'm forcing an issue onto them because they need to go, they have no choice because sometimes they have to go to the City Hall to do, to conduct business at the City Hall. And, and I am forcing a viewpoint upon that, that minority group or, or, maybe not minority, but, but that group that have a different opinion. The Ted parade is different. The Ted parade, they have a choice. If they do not want to participate in the Ted parade, then don't participate because I believe LGBT have the right to be in the Ted parade. If other group doesn't, doesn't feel that they want to, to parade with, in, in a parade that have LGBT, then that's fine. That's their choice. But at the City Hall, sometimes they have to go to the City Hall to conduct business. And so they have no choice. And that's, that is why I feel uneasy to support the display of the LGBT flag at the City Hall. I hope I, I explained to you, and you may not agree with me, but that is from my heart. And you see that I do support you on, on some other thing, and I may not go all the way where you want it to me, me to go, but, you know, we have differences, so.
I just want to reiterate that my motion is to place this item on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss having a flag policy. We've had six days to review it. It was made public on Thursday, so we've had six days to look at it. I'm not hearing any recommendations as far as how to make it better. But again, it'll, if we can push, vote to have this on the agenda and at the next meeting discuss how to improve it so that everyone is feeling more accepting of the flag policy.
You know, Mr., oh, I'm sorry.
No, please.
I was gonna say, I honestly, the way you just articulated it, I would be supportive of that if we can have a discussion as to what we'd like to do and how we're gonna direct city staff to pursue a flag policy. Should we, you know, I mean, at the minimum, I'd like to see at least one meeting in each district of the community get some input. Let's do it right. Let's not rush into something just because of emotions, you know? I think we, we need to do this properly, and we might decide that we are going to stick to a non-governmental type of model, or maybe we'll decide to allow, but we should get the input from everyone. When, when these type of items come up on, you know, agendas and matters, you get the, the groups that it affects that come out the most because it affects them. But, you know, you don't really hear from all the other groups because maybe they're mildly interested or they're afraid to come out for whatever reason because they don't want to be labeled a name or something as we've seen happen here tonight. So, you know, with that being said, I think it's only fair to our community and to the whole city that we do this properly and not just rush into something. So for, if you're amending your motion to be what you just said, then I'm all supportive of that.
Not amending my motion. I'm asking for this to be agendized for discussion, and at that point, if there's discussion to amend the policy and instruct staff further, then that would happen at the next meeting.
I think it gives us, do our due diligence to bring forth what we feel that matters most for this policy, get with our community, our district, whatever we feel that we need public input. I think that's all things that we can do. We have an email address. We all have phone numbers. We can all encourage our constituents to reach out to us with ideas, options, thoughts, feelings, et cetera, on this issue, on the policy of, of this, on this flag policy, and that gives us some time. If we bring it back, that obviously brings forth more discussion at that point, and maybe we'll be a little more well versed in what we feel is right for this. I'll be honest, myself, you put in Memorial Day weekend and all that the Strawberry Festival had in store and everything else, and, you know, I feel like that's, that was a lot going on, and so maybe we do need more time to look at this, and we do have two weeks to do so. And then you're saying we bring it back, and that then provides another layer of discussion with our potential tweaks and so forth, and we can go from there.
I'll make, I'll make the secondary motion then to do that. I'll make, I'll make a substitute motion to, to do just that. We will bring it back for.
There's no need.
For conversation without a specific Fullerton recommendation and bring it back for discussion at the next meeting without any specific focus on any city's particular policy. Bring it back for discussion on, on progressing our own policy.
Yeah, I don't think it was ever, I don't think it was ever intended to say that we feel like it has to be Fullerton. I just think that they had something that was already in place that was a good, yeah, a structure, a framework, something to kind of bounce my ideas off of, something to start with. I don't think it means that we're going to rubber stamp that as what makes sense regarding Grove. We do it our way and we make it right for us. And so I think that's what we need to do.
I think that's the purpose of agendizing it for discussion is so that Garden Grove could put its own stamp on it and.
Well, but that's not what her motion is. Her motion is similar to Fullerton. I'm not locking us into that with my substitute motion. I'm, I'm opening it up for whatever we decide, not just what is in the Fullerton motion.
I, I would support that, a discussion and of a flag policy. But I think I need to hear from constituents. I think it, there got to be a mechanism where we can get as much input as we can from the LGBT group, from other groups, so that I can, I can have a base to, you know, form my, my decision. So it just, just to say that, yeah, okay, we are going to discuss that in two weeks. Then I don't know if we are get back to the same board as we are today.
Well, and that's my concern, that we, we're, you know, instead of just directing city staff to do this properly, we're trying to put the cart before the horse and just jump on a, on an already existing policy, slap City of Garden Grove's name over another city's policy. And, you know, our community is way different than Fullerton. First of all, we may or may not decide certain things are good or bad within that Fullerton policy. Or maybe we have some own ideas from our own constituents that they want added to a policy. Or we may decide just to stick with, you know, like what John was saying, just non, just keep it governmental flags. So going down a specific, we want to go something like Fullerton. I think that locks us into too much there.
And then maybe, then may, there may be other, other solution to show that we support and we welcome and we embrace LGBT without using the flag. For example, and this is not open for discussion, so if you guys would like to give me the input, you're welcome to contact me directly after the council meeting. But there might be some other idea like in the section that is next to the picture of the city council. We may display the resolution on the wall and on that resolution, naming LGBT, June as the LGBT month, we have the picture of the rainbow flag. So that, that would be some other, some other idea that I don't know if it's, it's, be sufficient for the LGBT group, but the flag symbol will be there. And the resolution that, that naming, recognizing June as the LGBT month is on the wall without, without the issue of, of, you know, whether we, we display one flag or two flag, you know.
But that's all in addition to a flag policy, should we decide.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm, I'm just saying that, that there got to be more dialogue with everyone so that we can find a, a good solution. The, the main goal is to show support and embrace for the LGBT.
Well, I, I think that's a whole separate issue. That, that's not what's on the agenda here and that's what, not sweat on either of our motions. Our mo, motion is discussion of a flag policy, plain and simple. It has nothing to do with the gay pride flag or any other flag. It's, it's just simply a, a flag policy adoption.
Okay.
And I'd like to, if you're going to amend that motion, I believe we should be more specific. Discussion regarding whether or not to establish a commemorative flag policy. I don't think we're talking about other flags. This is discussion regarding whether or not to establish commemorative flag policy.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
That would be a substitute motion for me.
Are you good with?
That's probably about the only one I would support at the moment. Still open to discussing it, but, but.
Okay. Wait, I'm, I'm fine, so.
Are you good with changing the, your second on that?
No, I, I, I will continue, I will second it.
Can you clarify what the substitute motion was?
Okay, so we got a motion, a substitute motion, a second substitute motion, right?
Yeah, so I think we'll go with mine first, right? Second substitute motion is to.
What is yours again?
To agendize discussion. You got this?
Okay, well, I, I got it, but the substitute motion was seconded.
Okay.
Then the third substitute motion, so procedure is if you get a second to that.
He did, Fat, Fat seconded it.
Well, I'm not sure that he can because he seconded your substitute motion.
Okay, all right. Then, then can you state your, your, your.
The third.
Alternative motion?
Okay, the third alternative motion was discussion regarding whether or not Garden Grove will establish a commemorative flag policy.
You know, I'll, I'll modify my motion to that. How's that?
I'll agree.
If that will change his second.
What's yours?
I'll defer to Councilman Brighty.
I'm going to modify my motion to John's motion if you're willing to adjust your second.
I second it.
All right.
I have a really quick question for the attorney.
Yes.
For the flag policy, the draft policy that we're sharing, what is the difference between this flag policy and our current flag policy?
Difference is that this one has a commemorative flag portion.
So it's taking an existing flag policy and just amending it to include commemorative flags?
Yes.
And it's narrowing it down to no third party, no organization can request it, it's per council discretion, and it can only be hung for 45 days and what was the other one?
That was in the resolution, not the policy.
Right, so currently, the only formal policy the council has adopted by resolution is flying the POW flag. Because other than that, the policy is to follow the state and federal regulations for display of flags, which only allow governmental flags to be flown. So you adopted a separate policy to add the POW flag to that. And that policy basically says that the POW flag will be displayed only at, actually, it only mentions the Veterans Memorial across the parking lot from city hall. And so that's, that's really all, all the policies that you have adopted. So when you look at Fullerton's policy is very similar to that, it's just added the section pertaining to commemorative flags.
I just wanted to make sure that the public understands that and that our council members are kind of following it because I know we had a busy weekend, didn't get a lot of time to look at this. But so as a city, we follow federal and state guidelines regarding flags. As a city, we put forth a resolution to allow for the POW flag to be put on city property. And then we would be making another resolution to add commemorative flags and to, to add that similar to Fullerton, which is why I use their flag because their, their, their resolution is very similar to the one we already have. If we were to add commemorative flags, it would be very similar to this one. And just, I just want to reiterate the fact that it says commemorative flags may just be displayed only as authorized by resolution of the city council as an expression of the city's official sentiments. Number two, commemorative flags shall be displayed for a period of time that is reasonable or customary for the subject that is to be commemorated, but no longer than 45 continuous days. Commemorative flags shall be displayed at city hall exclusively. The city will not display a commemorative flag based on a request from a third party, nor will the city use its flag polls to sponsor the expression of a third party. And then it goes back to the order of which flags will be displayed. I just want to reiterate that and make it very clear because I think that that amendment or that addition covers us from any, from liabilities. It gives us discretion. It sets the parameters that we were discussing at the previous meeting. And I guess I'm just at a loss as to what else we need, what else we would change to, to that. And I haven't really heard any substantive discussion about why this isn't good enough.
Things could, could come up differently in our, in our discussion. For example, we might decide that commemorative flags could only be up for one day. We might decide flags can only be limited to existing types of flags and not new flags that are developed in the future. There's a lot of things that we could come up in our discussions and that's why I don't want to get us locked into a specific city, you know, and then just rubber stamp in theirs. You know, basically, we're taking Fullerton off, sticking Garden Grove on and, and we're going with theirs and that does not necessarily reflect our community. So there's a lot of things that could.
And I totally understand that, but to your point.
Come up in that discussion.
Commemorative flags may be displayed only as authorized by resolution of the city council as an expression of the city's official sentiments.
That's if we decide to go there.
And then commemorative flags should be, shall be displayed for a period of time that is reasonable or customary for the subject that is to be commemorated, but no longer than 45 days. It's not saying that you're going to leave it for 45 days, it says never to exceed that number. So when you're thinking about the legal terminology used in ordinances, resolutions, policy, law, you want to allow flexibility to give yourself the discretion to say no, but you want to set parameters that allow for you to pick and choose so long as it represents something that's commemorative per, you know, our, where did it say? To a commemorative event, a day, a movement, something that's nationally and federally recognized, et cetera. I think that this spells it out very well. The more that you try to tweak it and make it more specific, you pigeonhole yourself and are more liable, in my opinion, to being accused of discrimination and to other legal potential issues. I think the way that it's written, county, city attorney can totally jump in and tell me I'm wrong, allows for that discussion to fall solely to the city council because it specifically says no third-party organization or nonprofit will be allowed to request it.
Yeah, and, and even that's vague because a third party could go to you and say, we like you to present this. And then you do it for that third party. So even that really is kind of ambiguous and doesn't make sense. So I think those provisions should reflect our community and not the community of Fullerton. And so, you know, honestly, I think like John's motion, let's discuss if we're even going to go down the road of other non-governmental flags first, before we even go there. Because we might decide, we're just going to stick to the governmental flag. And, and that may be the decision. And then if we do decide to go with non-governmental flags, then we could decide what provisions reflect our community and aren't just a rubber stamp of Fullerton. So I think that's the answer to your question.
If it's John's triple substitute motion, whatever it is, it's still putting this back on the agenda in two weeks for further discussion.
Correct.
So that's ultimately, I think, what we're trying to, to get to at this point. It sounds like collectively as a body, we still have a conversation to be had and that means that we all have to make sure we're doing our due diligence within the next two weeks.
And I will mention, it has nothing to do with LGBT, I'm sorry, the gay pride flag or it has nothing to do with any other flag. It's simply a discussion on a flag policy.
If I can clarify, just to put it back, bring it back to what you're really discussing, because of Brownard regulations and your policies, you cannot take any action tonight other than to agree to agendize it. If a majority of the council agrees to agendize it, then the next agenda, you can take whatever action you wish to make. So the only discussion today is whether to agendize this item for action at your next meeting or to not agendize it.
So the, the motion that George had modified is similar to what John O'Neill mentioned earlier, and I second it. And that is we agendize for next council meeting to vote on whether we will or we will not consider a policy for non-government flag.
Or commemorative.
Commemorative flags.
Commemorative flags, yes.
Okay.
Before we finish discussion, I had a question about the POW flag. I know it was created back in the seventies and I think.
Way before our time.
The US Congress recognized it in like 90 or 91. When did we, when did our council adopt that POW flag? What year, do we know what year that was?
August 3rd, 89.
Yes, it was in 1989. August 3rd, 1989.
It was before the US Congress recognized it.
Well, the, yeah. According to Fullerton, it was recognized in 1971 by Public Law 101 dash 351.
Okay, I was just curious. So I guess we can vote on.
There's a motion and there's a second.
We're voting on the substitute motion.
First.
All right, you have to vote on that one first. And the substitute motion. The substitute motion is to agendize for action, a decision whether to consider a commemorative flag policy.
Yeah. Yep.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Wow, okay. That's government. Okay. Yeah. Vote on the first motion?
Oh, yeah, what was?
No, you can't.
No, I don't have to. The substitute motion passed, so that item is, so that's, that's over. It will be agendized for discussion at the next council meeting in two weeks yet, or at the next council meeting as scheduled. I believe we do have two closed session items, so.
We do.
Everybody, get ready for another round of coffee.
Yes.
Oh, geez, I forgot about that, yeah.
We still have two closed session items, right, council?
Cool.
Are they here to, you want to do matters first? Yep, we've, there, we've had ten grand worth of staff.
Mayor Jones.
In the other room. Ask yours.
Mayor Jones, can we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Mr. Olson?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So we will go to closed session, but I'll, I'll do this part now, so.
You want to wait just till maybe?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't mind waiting, but also you might want to just, I don't have anything to add to matters. I don't know if anybody else, but just go to that.
Okay.
If you want me to talk.
Give them a time to clear out. Respect to Richard.
Solo or is there, do we have any other? Call for some backup, just in case.
I don't know.
You don't want anybody getting? Is she solo or do we have any other police presence or? I'm just concerned that if she's solo and they're acting up the way.
I think they're, I think they're all right. They're just kind of.
Good? You good? Okay. All right. We're going to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Richard Olson. He was a notable resident and veteran. Richard Olson passed away recently. He moved into what is now District One on July 24th, 1964, and was politically active during the years before his retirement. He once held the position as president of the Midway City Sanitation District. He was chairman of District Three Sanitation District and he served as the vice president of the Board of Trustees of Coast Community College District. It is with sincere condolences that tonight's meeting be adjourned in memory of Mr. Olson. Services honoring Mr. Olson will be held on Sunday, June 9th at 11:15 a.m. at the American Legion located at 215 15th Street in Newport Beach. Thank you. With that, we will adjourn to closed session.
Matters.
Oh, I thought we agreed it, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I had three quick matters, one that I think I have to report on you two as well. A Strawberry Festival, very good event, had a great time. My first event, time as a council elected at the festival and the parade was an eye-opener. Lot of people out there and it was really great to see the community pride. Lot of people out there, and it was really great to see the community pride. Though, item of note, the mayor and myself attended the ICSC conference the week before last. Honestly, it was an eye-opener for me, a lot of work, a lot of work. Meeting after meeting after meeting. The main topic, obviously, soup du jour was Willow Wick, lot of meetings involving that. But we did discuss all the city applications and development with, along the Valley View Quarter, along Garden Grove Boulevard, Harbor Boulevard. We had meetings also involving Brookhurst and Chapman area. So we, we kinda pretty much covered the whole city with the, with the meeting, so I just wanna to report that we, that we did attend that. And then lastly, one thing, and it was an eye-opener to me, that Garden Grove doesn't have a memorial, uh, event of any type, Memorial Day, and I get, because of the Strawberry Festival and all the work of, but I, I was contacted by a family of some of our Medal of Honor recipients, wondering why we don't honor our Medal of Honor recipients. I know we have at least two here in Garden Grove. We may have more than that, that I'm not aware of, but I, I do know that Michael Mansour and Tybor Rubin are our Garden Grove Congressional Medal of Honor recipients. It would be nice to see something develop with that. I, I don't think Memorial Day would be the appropriate venue for that, because obviously the Strawberry Festival and all the stuff going around at that time, and every other city's doing Memorial Day. But maybe Veterans Day would be a good time for that, when, you know, something like that. You know, the Congressional Medal of Honor winners didn't necessarily die to receive the Congressional Medal, although Michael Mansour did, obviously, give his life. But maybe that would be an appropriate time to do something. I'm hoping to reach out to some of the veteran organizations, and, you know, I just wanna put that out to everybody, that maybe we can discuss that at a future time, maybe co-sponsoring an event with one of the veterans organizations to do, do something like that.
Councilmember Bryde, if I could, I, I'm not sure if it's still in the works or in planning stages, but I do know the Downtown Business Association had talked about putting on a veterans' event of some sort on Main Street. I think it was in, with, with Veterans Day or so forth, so that might be something to talk to that group about, and just see if that is still something that's in the, in the pipeline and in the works, because that could be a nice tie-in in some fashion.
Yeah, Dale Softner, who's one of the planning commissioners for our city, he's also involved in the veterans' group, so I'm hoping he can at least get some interest up and we can get it going, so. Just, I just wanna put that out so we can consider it later on, you know.
Councilman Bredingham, I was this leaning toward not saying things, but you opened a can of worms, so I cannot just not jumping at it, so maybe I just have another 20 or 30 minutes?
No.
No. I think it's an excellent idea, especially in, in September, where, you know, not many city is doing something for the veterans. It, it, it broke my heart, because two years ago, or three years ago, I went to the memorial services in, at the Magnolia Motory Park, and even though it's small, but it's meaningful. On Sunday, I called Scott, you know, our city manager, and I said, was I mistaken, because I don't see any invitation or notification to go to a memorial services in our city? And maybe I, you know, I accidentally deleted it, but it turned out that we didn't have any. So I asked Scott, and I asked other people to call, a lot of people, to find a memorial services for me. And, you know, at the last minute, I got the phone call, the phone number of the person, Mr. Scott Mackey, that organizing the event at the Fair Haven. And I went there, and I bumped into Dale Softner, and we talked about, and I think it's very important that our city, we are twice bigger than Westminster, yet every year Westminster had put, you know, a very good program to honor the, the veterans, and it's just broke my heart that we don't have one. So hopefully, if we are not doing that for the memorial, memorial weekend, at least we need to do one for the veteran, during the veteran holiday. The second issue that I, I would like to, to bring up is that, well, and anyway, it's long, so let, let do that next week, because there's no time urgency, and we still have closed session, so in respect for my colleague, I can defer that to the following meeting to talk about.
I'll just echo what George said, we had a productive trip out to ICSC for another year for the city. And we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you.